Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the Board of Equalization Agenda or Board of Equalization Meeting to Order of April 21st, 2020 at 7:00 PM, and we'll begin with roll call.
McLean?
Present.
Ellis?
Present and in the room.
Coons? Councilmember Coons? I can see he's in the meeting, we'll come back to him. Bechtel?
Here.
Jurgert?
Present, in the room.
Jensen?
Here.
Jacobus?
Present, in the room.
Legband?
Yes.
Councilmember Coons?
Oh, he's unmuted.
Yeah. Councilmember Coons? Okay. Seven councilmembers present mayor.
The first item in the Board of Equalization Meeting is Consider Schedule of Assessments, Leaving a Special Tax Assessment for Sanitary Sewer District Number SD 704-18. At this time, we'll have staff report. Dave, go to get, please. Dave?
He's being promoted to a panelist.
Okay.
Dave, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
All right. Okay, this item is for Board of Adjustment to Levy Assessments on Sewer District 704-18. This project is in the alley. It was a sewer line in the alley between 18th and 19th Street, between Broad Street and Park Avenue. This project started about two years ago, where the neighbors came forward, they were having problems with the sewer in their alley. It was a private sewer, and they were either contemplating repairing the sewer and leaving it private, or creating a sewer district, and being assessed, and then the city takes over the project, and then the city owns the line when the project is finished. We followed the process of creating a district, I believe it was in July of 2018. Following creation of the district, we then sent letters of notification to the property owners affected by the district. They had 30 days to vote the project out. We did not receive the 51% of protests against it, so the city moved forward with constructing the project. The project was constructed last summer, it's complete now. We have finalized all the bills, and we, a month ago or so, we set up the schedule of the Board of Equalization. Letters were again sent to the property owners notifying them 30 days in advance of the Board of Equalization. This was an item that was on the agenda last Tuesday and was carried over to tonight. Total construction cost of the project was $65,953.69. Soft costs on the project, which would be bonding, advertising, engineering, et cetera, was $7,817.87, with a total assessable cost of the project of $73,771.56. There are eight property owners in the district, and each property owner will be assessed $9,221.44.
Is there any questions for staff?
Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Jacobus.
I'll just ask the same thing that I asked last week, and just a reminder about the rebate on the length of time.
That's 15 years.
Thank you, that's all I had, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? This time, we'll open the public hearing. Any comments in the public? Any comments in the public? This time, I would close the public hearing. Any comments from council? Councilmember Coons?
Just checking to see if you could hear from me?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you present?
I am present and alive, yes, thank you.
I'll have the record reflect. I'll have the record reflect that Councilmember Coons joined the meeting at 7:08 PM.
Any other comments from council? I would take a motion in regards to this item. Mark?
Make a motion to approve Sewer District Number SD 704-18.
And Councilman Coons?
I'll second that motion.
Ready? Cast your votes.
Legband?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jurgert?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yeah.
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Motion carries 8-0, Mayor.
Item 2, Resolution 2020-082, Leaving a Special Tax Assessment in the Amount of $392.52 Against Lot 10, Block 9, Blairs, to the City of Fremont, Pay the Costs of Weed and Debris Removal and Assessment. This time, we'll have staff report.
Mayor and council, this is a pretty straightforward item, where somebody trying to recover the costs of some work that was done on the property. It has been noticed, the person responsible, listed at the assessor's office, did receive a mailing from us, and have not gotten a response yet, so I would ask that this property be assessed for the amount due.
Any questions for staff? At this time, we'll open the public hearing. We don't need a public hearing, okay? Yeah, I got it. Any comments from the public?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Robin White, Fremont, Nebraska. My question is, since this is on the Board of Equalization, does that mean that the City of Fremont has been doing these special assessments incorrectly all the time? And does that vacate the past special assessments? Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Any comments from council? Councilmember Jacobus?
Tyler, could you elaborate on the question that was raised?
So, historically, these items have been approved by the City Council. At the attorney's request, we are addressing this during the Board of Equalization meeting. When we do an assessment example for the Business Improvement District downtown, the Board of Equalization equalizes, and then the City Council approves the resolution to make the assessment. And so, we had this item on a while back, and at the recommendation of the attorney, we added it to the Board of Equalization meeting.
I just want to remind everyone that that's really not the issue that's before us, so we gotta be careful as we discuss. Councilmember Jacobus?
Hi, am I on?
Yeah, still.
Just wanted to say thank you, Tyler. I didn't know if there was a difference. I didn't realize until that question was raised, but thank you for the explanation.
Any other questions, comments? I would take a motion in regards to Resolution 2020-082. Councilmember Jensen?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2020-082.
Councilmember McLean?
I will second that.
Ready? Cast your votes.
McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons? Councilmember Coons?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Jurgert?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Legband?
Yes.
Motion carries 8-0, Mayor.
Next item is, I would take a motion to adjourn. Councilmember McLean?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Legband?
I will second that.
Cast your votes.
McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Jurgert?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Legband?
Yes.
Motion carries 8-0 to adjourn, Mayor.
Okay, we're gonna take a minute or two and make some adjustments. The Board of Equalization
Enough to make adjustments.
Meeting is now closed at 7:15 PM. Are we good?
I'm still on Brian's screen, is that ever gonna go away?
We'd like you to stop sharing your screen, Brian.
That's okay, I just want to be able to see my own screen, so that I can go to the agenda on my own. And go to municipal code if I want to.
Tyler, can you show, let's make sure you got it, Brad?
So, right now, your agenda's over here, would you like?
No, it's fine, I just wanted to be able to get to this on my own, so I can go wherever I want.
Time now is 7:16. We'll call the Community Development Agency Meeting to Order, and we'll begin with roll call. I do want to mention, the Opens Meeting Act is posted on the rear wall next to the agendas.
McLean?
Yes, present.
Ellis?
Here.
Coons?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Jurgert?
Yes, and in the room.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Present, in the room.
Legband?
Yes.
Motion carries 8-0, Mayor.
The first item in front of us is Resolution 2020-004, Redevelopment Agreement for the Holstone Farms Redevelopment Project on Property Generally Located at East Cloverly Road and South Platte Avenue, Dodge County, Nebraska. This time, we'll have staff report.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I feel like I'm in a Sprint commercial or something. Jennifer Damm, Planning Director. This is a request to approve the redevelopment agreement for the Holstone Farms Project on March 31st. The City Council and the CDA approved the redevelopment plan, which expanded the redevelopment area and adopted the Holstone Farms redevelopment project. The minimum project valuation is $128,550,000 to be constructed over nine phases. The total TIF indebtedness request to be authorized is $23,455,000 over the nine phases. This agreement establishes the terms and the use of the TIF indebtedness, and it specifies the public and private improvements that will be constructed as a result of the project. The fiscal impact to the city is the cost of additional wastewater improvements and the cost of a new electrical substation.
Is there any questions for staff? Seen none. We'll open the public hearing. Tom Houston?
Tom Houston, my address is 233 South 13th, Suite 1900 in Lincoln. Appearing before you tonight on behalf of Holstone Farms, Holstone Farms LLC, I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight about the redevelopment agreement. This is the final step and the multiple steps that we have pursued to approve the modernization and expansion of the Holstone Farms plant in Fremont. Just a couple things I wanted to highlight about the redevelopment agreement. As you're aware, there's a current construction going on at the plant. It's a $21 million, excuse me, $31 million preliminary phase that will result in an immediate increase along with the existing plant as it's annexed to the city. The project itself, in my mind, consists of nine different components, and the redevelopment agreement authorizes the use of nine different phases. The total investment is in excess of $300 million. Now, that would be comprised of both physical plant and equipment, and as we are aware with tax increment financing, we only deal with the incremental taxes created by the real estate investment. That's why the minimum project valuation under the redevelopment agreement is $128,550,000. And that's the aggregate of all nine components or nine phases. The definition of project under the redevelopment agreement includes not only the private improvements to be constructed by Holstone Farms, the plants and the buildings, but also the public improvements and the aid to construction made to the City of Fremont by the redeveloper to expand capacity at the wastewater treatment facility, and also to build an additional electrical substation. Article 3 of the redevelopment agreement really sets forth the obligations of the CDA. Section 3.01 deals with the capture of the tax increment created by the project. Even though it's nine components of the project, it's likely that several components will be combined, and there probably will be three separate phases, I think is how it's gonna be shaking out. The redevelopment agreement obligates the redeveloper to notify the city and the CDA prior to July 1st of each year of the effective date of a phase. And all construction must be completed prior to December 31st, 2026. So, it's a pretty short window for the expansion and modernization of this plant. Section 303 of the redevelopment agreement describes the tax increment financing indebtedness, authorizes the CDA to issue tax increment financing notes for each phase, and I would envision that each note will be tied to a phase, so approximately three notes is what we're envisioning. And the aggregate amount not to exceed is $23,455,000 in the form of the tax increment financing note is attached to the redevelopment agreement as Exhibit B1. I just want to remind you that even though the CDA is the issuer of the note, this is not the general obligation of this Community Development Agency, it's not the general obligation of the City of Fremont. The city and the CDA merely serve as a conduit, and they're not liable on the note. They're only obligated to make payments to the extent that incremental taxes are created by the investment in the project. The Section 3.04 describes the uses of the TIF. And I think it's important to note that if each note is issued, the City of Fremont will be collecting its 1% administrating fee, which over the course of the various phases would exceed $234,000, plus a 5% city-designated use, which based upon the existing indebtedness would total in excess of $1170,000. The redeveloper uses are described on Exhibit C, which includes aid to construction to the city for the lagoon system at the municipal wastewater treatment facility, and that's approximately $14 million. Forest main sanitary sewer of $780,000, aid to the city for construction for the electrical substation of $5.7 million, site preparation of $500,000, energy and efficiency enhancements of an estimate of $2 million, and design costs for the city improvements and the Holstone Farms improvements. Now, if you total all those numbers that I just read off, it's in excess of $27 million, even though the tax increment financing indebtedness is only $23.45 million. I always like to include some excess in there because these are cost estimates, and we don't have final numbers until the cost certification process is completed. But in any event, the tax increment financing will never exceed the $23.45 million. I wanted to highlight Section 3.07 and 3.08 in particular. It deals with the aid to construction for the wastewater treatment facility, and really ties back to the wastewater services and cost share agreement that the city approved back on March 31st, and with the affiliate of Holstone Farms, the Holstone Cooperative Farms, for the contribution of the $5 million to the city and, plus for the initial phase, and $9.5 million for the wastewater treatment lagoon expansion process. In addition, 3.07 deals with the obligation of the redeveloper to reimburse the city for all the engineering design fees of $1,750,000. And then likewise, in Section 3.08, kind of similar issue dealing with the electrical substation, where the redevelopers obligated to provide the funding for the design and the actual aid to construction sum for the electrical substation. Article 4 deals with the obligations of the redeveloper. 4.01 makes it pretty clear that the redevelopers obligated to build the project up to nine phases, and construction must be completed, if at all, by December 31st, 2026. Section 4.02 is the cost certification process, where the redevelopers obligated to demonstrate that the tax increment financing dollars will be spent on eligible expenditures in order to comply with the Nebraska Community Development Law, and we will make sure that that occurs. Section 4.04 obligates the redeveloper to pay the real estate taxes, which creates the incremental taxes for the purposes of the TIF. And this is one of those projects where, in the event that there is a shortfall, the shortfall burden falls entirely upon Holstone Farms. For example, if the valuation is less than we had projected, there would be insufficient tax revenue to pay the debt service on the notes. And the redevelopment agreement makes clear that the redeveloper has to agree to defer any receipt of those payments by that shortfall amount to the extent that the shortfall exists, so it's not the risk of the city. The exhibits really kind of implement the agreement, describes the various phases, describes the amount of tax increment financing for each phase on a phase-by-phase or component-by-component basis, with the aggregate amount of $23,455,000. And Exhibit C shows how that tax increment financing sum was calculated based upon the existing base value. Now that the city has annexed the site, the base value is included in the tax levy, or is subject to the tax levy, and it's only the increment that is created from this point forward that would be captured. So, it's a complicated agreement, but it's, I think, a straightforward process that we've been pursuing here, and I would appreciate your support of the measure, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
Is there any questions for the applicant at this time? From, from council first. Councilman Jurgert?
Yes, I'm not sure whether these questions go directly to the applicant's attorney or to the city's attorney, and hopefully, these few questions that I want to ask can be as straightforward as yes-no answers, just for clarification for myself, but feel free to expand if you need to. My first question is, does the redevelopment plan and the redevelopment agreement, when it includes a TIF request, must it accurately describe the redevelopment area?
I'll fill that question. It certainly has to describe the redevelopment area for the private improvements. It's often difficult to accurately describe the area for the public improvements because oftentimes, that's in the public right of way, which is not otherwise legally described.
Okay, so that kind of gets to my next question, and that is, does the redevelopment area need to be owned by the applicant?
Not necessarily.
Okay, and under Nebraska law, is one allowed to make TIF improvements to property that's not owned or defined as part of the redevelopment area specifically?
To the extent that the improvements are made to municipal infrastructure, the answer is yes.
So, the fact that the lagoon area, for example, is not in the redevelopment area in and around Holstone itself, it's quite a ways away, that's not an issue?
Correct. The dollars being contributed by the redeveloper to the city for expansion of the municipal infrastructure, really one of the primary intents of the Nebraska Community Development. really one of the primary intents of the Nebraska Community Development.
I think at the last meeting, I asked this question and we didn't know at the time. And that is, the lagoon expansion, as far as the city is concerned, when this gets handled, is going to be beyond the amounts that Holstone will be putting in. And that amount for the insinues additional outlays were unknown. Are they still unknown?
Yes, I think at the last meeting, we estimated it'd be between twenty and thirty million dollars.
And what's our outstanding bonded level currently that we'd be adding that twenty million to?
Jody's on, I think we bonded thirty, thirty million, I think, at the last project.
And so I think my last question in this regard has to do with the kayak funding. So the improvements that will be made at the lagoon site, the wastewater treatment plant is getting capital and native construction treatment. Holstone gets that treatment, so they get to pay for that periodically. And then they're putting that in their TIF recovery and recovering what they have to pay in those kayak payments through their tax forgiveness that they get under TIF. Is that accurate?
Well, we don't get tax forgiveness. The improvements will be funded by Holstone Farms. And then they'll be reimbursed to the extent of the incremental value and incremental taxes over a period of fifteen years.
Right, so those kayak payments that you have to render, get an essence processed through the TIF application?
I agree with that.
That's the only questions I have for right now, thanks. Any other questions? I got it.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Excellent presentation, Mr. Houston. First of all, I am thankful that Holstone Farms is in our community. That being said, should we be doing any kind of loans or grants or approving TIF in the amount of twenty-three and a half million dollars during this difficult economic time? We had already given them one million, three hundred thousand in LB eight forty funding. And the public may not realize that the way this was written on the agenda, that this was a TIF application. And then as far as the infrastructure, my question is, who is going to own the infrastructure and be ultimately responsible for repairs and improvements to the infrastructure? Thank you.
Any other questions? Jay? Jay? Jay, if you can hear us, you need to select and unmute yourself. Move on at this point. Any other questions? Jay? Is off, any other questions? This time I would close the public hearing. Any comments from the CDA? Councilmember Yerger?
Well, I just want one last comment. I wanted to hear what the public had to say with regards to this. Because many of my constituents have expressed concern over many TIF arrangements that have been passed preceding this by prior councils and even this council up to this date. And the concern has certainly not been directed against Holstone as a company. They're certainly a great company and an asset to the community. So the comments that I received weren't in that vein at all. But they did mirror some of the comments that were made tonight in public. That is, in light of the most recent long line of former applicants, the concern they expressed was repeating the foregoing near-term tax revenue that would benefit the community. And even though there might be a long-term benefit of this as TIF has been explained to us many times, in light of where we are today with our COVID nineteen experience, businesses, local businesses that are hurting, the report in today's paper with the tax revenues that are going to be significantly less than what we originally projected, granting tax forgiveness in the near term at this juncture doesn't particularly seem to be a true matter. And I know it's unfortunate sometimes, timing's everything. But in this particular case, we're in different circumstances than we were just weeks or months ago. And so the concern that's been raised tonight is the same one that I've heard from constituents.
Councilmember Jacobus?
Mr. Houston, can you remind us the actual taxes that are being paid in prior to any improvements that this TIF would help support moving forward? Could you remind us of what those taxes are that are being paid now that they're annexed in prior to these improvements?
You will recall that the city council did annex the Holstone Farm campus here within the last few months, which brought immediately in excess of fourteen million dollars of value to city tax levy, which is a number in excess of, I don't know, three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars immediately. The improvements that are underway in twenty nineteen, to the extent that any of them were completed and added to the value as of January first, twenty twenty, add on to that fourteen million. I don't know what that number is because I don't think the county assessor knows what that number is yet. But I think there's a larger base value than I've ever seen in a redevelopment project across the state.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the CDA? I would take a motion in regards to this item. Councilman Leggman?
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero four.
Councilman Coons? Councilman Coons? Can we get a second? I'm having a hard time hearing you, Mike. Councilman Jensen, can you second?
Yes, I'll be kept silent.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Cast your votes. Leggman?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Yerger?
Oh.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Ellis?
No.
McLean?
Yes.
Motion carries six two, Mayor. Next item is a motion to adjourn. I would take a motion to that effect. Councilmember Leggman?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Jacobus? Ready?
Yep.
Cast your votes. Yerger?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus? Leggman?
Yes.
McLean?
Yeah.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons? Councilman Coons?
Yes.
There we go. Councilman Bechtel?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero, Mayor. Let it be on the record that the CDA meeting of April twenty first concluded at seven forty PM. We'll now call the regular council meeting of the city of Fremont, April twenty first, twenty twenty, time is seven forty PM. The Mo opens meeting act is posted on the rear wall next to the agendas. We'll begin the regular meeting with roll call. McLean?
Present.
Ellis?
Present and in the room.
Coons?
Yes, present.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Yerger?
Present and in the room.
Jensen?
Present in the room.
Jacobus? Leggman?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero, Mayor. We'll begin with Mayor's comments. Just wanted to, I have two things actually, and we do have a proclamation. The first item is, is today, after several weeks of requesting more tests, Three Rivers Health was able to do more tests. And we did close to a hundred tests today. We should have results in two to three days. And of those hundred tests, as things have progressed, at least based on the number of tests we've done already, we've got a rate of around eight to ten percent. Most of those hundred were folks that were systematic. So, you know, quite frankly, we could have a little bit higher number than eight percent. It couldn't even be double that. I just want everyone to know that as we get to the end of this week, our numbers will increase. We knew that time was coming and we need to, we just need to be ready as a council. I will tell you that Holstone Farms, Lincoln Premium Poultry, Fremont Beef, all of our large employers, structural components, have all done an excellent job in regards to, you know, taking all the precautions necessary to prevent the spread of the virus. The challenge is still education and communication and ensuring that when folks leave work, that they're safe as well. The challenge is that, you know, they're extremely safe at work. But when they leave work and get out in their own environments, they're not quite as safe. And that's when we have the spreads. So hopefully, as we move forward, we get through this next week without too many more, too much more of an increase. But I do want everyone to be not scared when they see those numbers begin to climb. So with that, we also have a proclamation. You know, it just seems like we go from one thing to the next. You know, just almost three or four weeks ago, we were battling floodwaters with water running over County Road nineteen into County Road or into Lake twenty. And a part of that was due to the fact that we had an open breach still in the Rod and Gun Club. Today, we have a proclamation to, which was just really to share our appreciation to James Abel, owner of Nebco Inc. And for all of their work that they did on their own dime in regards to installing about a two-block levee system to separate the water from Lake twenty and Lake Leva. And so I would like to read this proclamation. This will be presented to Mr. Abel in the coming days. Whereas Nebraska experienced record flooding from a bomb cyclone weather event in March of twenty nineteen, causing more than seven thousand homes to flood with damages estimated at two point seven billion. Whereas Dodge County sustained nearly thirty million in damages to public roads, bridges, and levees resulting from the historic March twenty nineteen flood. And whereas a combination of rainfall, muddling snow, and ice jams caused record flows in the Platte River, causing the Ames Levee, the Rod and Gun Club dike, the State Lake's number twenty dike and dike between State Lake number twenty and Lake Leva to breach. And whereas these breaches allowed a massive amount of water from the Platte River to flow directly towards Fremont, causing millions of dollars in damages to public and private property in Lake Leva and the city of Fremont. Whereas the private owner of Lake Leva, James Abel, Nebco Inc., spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to repair and fortify the dike between State Lake number twenty and Lake Leva to not only to protect Lake Leva property, but also the city of Fremont. Therefore, I, Scott Getchman, Mayor, on behalf of the city council, the citizens and businesses of the city of Fremont, take pleasure in presenting this proclamation of appreciation to James Abel, Nebco Inc., for not only repairing the breach between State Lake number twenty and Lake Leva, but fortifying the dike as well. This work will greatly add to the safety and peace of mind that Fremont residents and businesses will enjoy because of his efforts. And when this era, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Fremont to be affixed this twenty-first day of April, twenty twenty. We just want to say thank you for his generosity in making that repair. So, and you can clap. I don't know if I can hear it, but. With that, we'll go to item number one on the agenda. The regular agenda, motion to adopt current agenda for April fourteenth, twenty twenty, regular meeting. I do have one item or several items that are together. I would like to move items twenty-five and twenty-eight, which are tied to item number seven. I would like to move item twenty-six, which is tied to CDA number one. And I would like to move item twenty-seven, which is tied to the Board of Equalization number one. And those would be the four items I would like to move up just behind number seven before we go to the consent agenda. And I would like that to be a separate motion at that time. Is there any other items? Councilmember Yerger?
Yes, I just wanted to advise that item number five, which I put on the agenda, I am pulling from tonight's agenda as it is not necessary given activity that was taken up at the last meeting. So item number five is being withdrawn.
Councilmember Jensen?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move item thirty-two up to in front of the consent agenda, right in front of item number eight.
Councilmember Jacobus? It would be to move number six, item number six.
To remove it.
We'll do that when we get to the consent agenda. So I'd like to do these in motions. So items twenty-five, twenty-eight, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, I would take. So items twenty-five, twenty-eight, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, I would take the motion in regards to those four items. Councilmember Jacobus? Councilmember Jensen?
I'll second that.
Cast your votes.
McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Yerger? Yes. Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Legband?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero, Mayor.
Then we would need a motion for Councilman Jensen's number thirty-two. Councilman Legband?
I make a motion to approve his motion.
To move it up?
Yes.
Councilmember Coons?
I'll second that motion.
Ready? Cast your votes.
Legband?
Yes.
Jacobus? Jensen?
Yes.
Yerger?
No.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Ellis?
No.
McLean?
Yes.
Motion carries five, two, three.
And then I would like to remove items five and six. Take a motion to that effect. I'm fine with that. I just don't want to have any problem. Don't want anybody to have to come back, so. Councilman Coons?
I make a motion to remove item five and six.
Sir's second? Councilman Legband?
I will second that.
Ready? Cast your votes.
McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Yerger?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Legband?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero, Mayor.
Item two. You're right. At this time, I would take a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Councilman Coons?
I make a motion to do the agenda as amended.
Councilman Jensen?
I will second that.
Cast your votes.
Yerger?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Legband?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero, Mayor.
Moving on to previous business, item two, Resolution two thousand and twenty oh sixty-two, accepting and authorizing execution of the consultant agreement with Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District, NENAD, for the construction management of Community Development Block Grant nineteen dash EM dash zero zero two. This time we'll have staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Lottie Mitchell, Grant Coordinator. Um, yes, tonight we are here requesting approval of the consultant agreement with NENAD for construction management for Community Development Block Grant nineteen EM zero zero two, which is providing funds for repair to the levee. On October twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, we received notification that we have been awarded four hundred and eighty-five thousand to assist in bringing the Fremont Farmland Railroad Levee up to the core PL eighty-four ninety-nine standards. The PL eighty-four ninety-nine is the Core of Engineers Maintenance Program. This block grant will provide four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for those repairs to the levee. Other grant-funded projects include, excuse me, other grant-funded project costs include ten thousand dollars for construction management and twenty-five thousand dollars for general administration. Local matching funds are not a requirement of this contract, but they will be provided due to the cost of the overall project. The levee is currently undergoing an evaluation by JEO Consulting under another block grant eighteen PP zero zero five. And the survey to determine property lines and easements is in the final stages. Preliminary information received from that survey has identified the need to acquire property or easements along the levee to allow for us to bring the levee up to compliance with the Core's maintenance program. The next steps will be to work on notifying property owners and start working towards acquiring the needed property. The step after that would be to procure a contractor for tree removal. The environmental reviews determine that tree removal can only be done between August first and September thirtieth due to the bald eagle migratory birds and the northern long-eared bat. The fiscal impact of this contract is zero as the ten thousand dollars is covered by grant funds. And I did include a table showing the project budget in your backup.
Is there any questions for staff? Councilmember Jacobus?
Um, Lottie, I was trying to make the math come out and wash. And I see where the five hundred and eight thousand between the three hundred and eighty-one FEMA sixty-three point five from NEMA, that left sixty-three point five for the city, correct?
That is on the breach repair portion. And yes, you're right.
So out of that five hundred and eighty thousand, excuse me, out of the five hundred thousand, four hundred and eighty-five of that was CDPG grant money. And that left fifteen. So fifteen and sixty-three five is seventy-eight thousand five hundred. And you'd said ten thousand was in the cost or was in the grant money. So that twenty-five thousand in construction oversight, that's what should be added to the seventy-eight five? Because that will come up to one hundred and thirteen, that would be one hundred and three five.
Yeah, however you'd like to lay out the amounts. You're, you're right, and that the city does have matching portions. This grant will cover four hundred and eighty-five thousand. We're hoping FEMA will reimburse us seventy-five percent of the cost to make the permanent repairs to those breaches. And that NEMA will make the twelve and a half percent reimbursement. That leaves us responsible for the other twelve and a half. And if the, our estimates are accurate, that this project is going to come in at five hundred for the tree removal and bringing the levee up to the core standards, we do have additional funds. This grant doesn't require us to inject matching funds into the project, but it's going to likely happen just because of the project itself. Because of those permanent repairs that we're going to have to make. And if the tree removal and acquisition comes in above the four eighty-five.
Well, where does, it says in your ten grand is covered by the grant funds. But it looks like we're taking that on. Is that correct? Because our, our cost is one hundred and thirteen five. Where does that ten thousand come in at, out of that one hundred and thirteen five, doesn't it? Because I was trying to get the math to come up. Sixty-three point five is our twelve and a half percent.
Excuse me, the, sorry, the ten thousand will cover NENAD's construction management services.
But that's in the grant fund.
Correct.
So where does that extra ten thousand go? We have seventy-eight five between sixty-three point five, our twelve and a half percent, plus fifteen thousand to total up with CDPG to five hundred thousand. That's seventy-eight thousand five hundred. And so there's another twenty-five thousand in grant administration or construction costs, I should say. And that would be a hundred and three thousand five hundred.
So the grant is for four eighty-five, and you're correct in identifying that twenty-five thousand dollars will cover the general administration to manage the grant, and ten thousand will cover the construction management portion. The four hundred and fifty thousand will provide for actual physical construction activities. If we go over that, then hopefully the, hopefully we don't go over that with this project. Preliminary estimates for tree removal is at like three hundred and eighty thousand. We have not yet done appraisals for the small portions of property that we need to acquire, but we're hoping to come in at four eighty-five so that the grant activities are fully covered by the grant. And the remainder of the construction costs are for those permanent repairs to the breaches that were sustained during the flood. And those costs should be reimbursed at a rate of seventy-five percent from FEMA. So the budget estimate included in your packet is just that, it's just an estimate. We hope that we're able to come in at these costs, but with FEMA reimbursement and that project still needs to be designed.
Who's doing our grant administration then, when you said grant administration and construction management?
Yep.
Ten grand is covered. There's thirty-five grand total. So that would have left.
We approved the construction administration with NENAD several months ago, closer to when we received notice of award. The way Community Development Block Grants work is that, once you receive notice of award, you can then execute that general administration contract. And then you have to go through the environmental reviews and all of the release of funds requirements. Once you receive the release of funds, you can then execute the construction contract.
Is the Fremont Levee evaluation that we were paying for to JEO at twenty thousand two hundred and seventy-six, is that included in these costs?
The twenty thousand, what number was that?
Twenty thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. It's the Fremont Levee evaluation that we were paying to JEO to evaluate the requirements to repair and bring this up to standard that we have to.
Yep, the levee evaluation is being covered by block grant eighteen EM, excuse me, eighteen PP zero zero five. And that grant is for seventy-two thousand, I do believe. And so the evaluation being done by JEO is covered by the, by that grant.
So that's not included in any of these costs here then?
No, this is separate.
So, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Comments by the public? We have four oh two, seven one nine, nine 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 two.
Thank you very much. We are hoping for reimbursement, and we, we hope we don't go over that amount. Didn't the city pay for repairs for many years prior to owning the property? How much did the city of Fremont actually pay for the repairs prior to owning it? And does this include vetting of conflicts of interest with companies that are owned by city of Fremont elected or appointed officials? Specifically, if an elected or appointed official has ownership interest in a company and they are registered with SAM, is that conflict going to be disclosed to the public? If so, how? Thank you.
Any other questions? From the public? Vince? You're on. Vince? You're on mute, there you go. Vince? Vince, do you have a comment in regards to the levee repairs in this resolution? Any other comments from the public? Any comments from the council? Councilmember Jacobus? I would take a motion in regards to Resolution two thousand and twenty oh sixty-two. Councilmember Yerger?
Make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty dash oh sixty-two.
Councilmember Coons?
Second that motion.
Ready? Cast your votes.
Legband?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Yerger?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero, Mayor.
Item number three, Resolution two thousand and twenty oh seventy, authorize and approve the agreement with Civil Solutions LLC for professional consulting services in construction engineering and, and administration for the Bell Street Asphalt Overlay Project. This time we'll have staff report.
Dave Goode, Director of Public Works. This item is for construction inspection for the Bell Street Overlay Project. We received a proposal from Civil Solutions to do this work. It's a not-to-exceed contract, the twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and zero cents. What in, in effect, they will do is bill us hourly for the project. So since the project has already been underway for a couple of weeks, that's number will certainly be a little less than that as long as we don't get any kind of like weather situation that draws out the project. You're not approving necessarily the contract that's in the packet tonight. That contract is being reworked by our attorney's office, just to clean up some of the language. But the scope of services that is within that agreement is, is correct, and so are the hourly rates and everything else. But the attorney's office will be drafting up a formal, formal contract for this.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Yerger? Any comments from the public? Four oh two, seven one nine, nine 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 two.
Thank you, Robin White, Fremont, Nebraska. Has, hasn't this project already started? And doesn't our city engineer have the qualifications to handle this project? And my last question is, why is the council approving a contract that they have not seen? Thank you.
Any other comments in the public? Shane? Shane, you're up.
Sorry about that, I was on mute. Shane Athenee, Fremont, Nebraska. Kind of piggyback on Robin's comment. I'm confident we have a city inspector. We've hired a. civil engineer and we have a director of public works slash engineer. Not quite sure why we're paying more money to have inspection services done when we should be doing it in-house.
Any other comments? Comments from council? Uh councilmember Jacobus?
Um could I get some answers to those questions? There was um admonition, admonition by legal in prior times that if we haven't seen the contract, we shouldn't be approving it. Um but also, a question was raised about um doing our own inspection. Dave, could you elaborate on that? Do we normally do our own inspections or why would we um have more than ten percent of the project possibly being paid out to an independent to do the inspection and construction oversight? Could you explain how that works for us?
Well, I don't believe it's ten percent. This is a hundred thousand dollar project. But yes, I am qualified to do the inspection, so is the civil engineer and so is our inspections, inspection staff. But we've got uh four projects going right now, soon to have five. Got about four to five million dollars worth of projects this summer and with the coronavirus, not really knowing where that's going to be leaving us in the next few months, uh we felt it was prudent to uh get some assistance on this project. I mean, we can do it ourselves, but we're gonna be stretched really thin if uh things go sideways for us this summer.
Uh councilmember Yurger?
And I wanted to follow up on the contract item as well. You said this was being modified by legal for I'm not sure what, maybe I missed it. Did you indicate what it was being modified for? And I guess I tend to agree with the statement that Mr. Sullivan gave to us early on when he was brought in as the attorney and that is council shouldn't approve contracts we haven't, we haven't seen. So what, what's the extent of the contract revisions that are being made at this time? And do we need to approve this tonight because this work has already started? Or what's the status of getting the contract finalized? Or can you at least expound as to the changes that are being made?
I can respond to that in part. Um I would agree that it would be best for a full agreement to be before the council. Um the thing, the contract terms are before the council right now. The way it would be formed, it, what our office would do is put it into an agreement with general terms that uh are just standard form for a contract that we would look for. Um if uh, so that's, we would put together a contract that would include the terms that are before you tonight.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Lake Band?
Well Travis, you're saying you feel confident that we can move forward and vote on this tonight, even though the contract isn't fully finished?
I feel confident that the contract would encompass the terms that are before you, and if you're comfortable with the terms, then uh the answer to your question is yes.
Any other comments from council? Uh councilmember McLean?
So just to clarify, since we are meeting like again in a week, would the contract be ready by then? And is that a problem in? I mean, we've already waited to this point. Would that really be an issue if we wanted to wait till the contract was modified a week, in a week from now?
Logistically, I, I'm not sure um as far as the other party is concerned, but I can certainly make sure on our end that we have it completed. The only holdup would be getting it everything agreed to by then, but if the council would feel more comfortable that way, then I'm more than happy to do that.
Does that present an issue for you, Dave?
Um I don't, oh no. Another week hasn't done to harvest any. Uh I would like also to expand a little bit. Uh we've, we've do these contracts every year. Uh we inspect some projects and we hire out some other projects. It's nothing unusual about this at all.
Uh councilmember Yurger?
I would just echo the comments I think that uh councilmember McLean made with regards to having the contract terms. I understand legal saying you have the terms in front of you, we just don't have the document. I think waiting a week until we actually have the document shouldn't really pose us a problem and I would be in favor of actually having the language, even though it looks like we have it. But nevertheless, if legal is going to craft it in a different format, then it'd be better for us to wait a week. That's where I'm at as well.
The, the challenge is uh it probably won't be on uh in the backup uh tomorrow. As the agenda needs to be out tomorrow, but uh probably. Travis, do you think by the end of the week you could have it um in front of council? In the agenda packet?
Yes, I can have a draft form for, by Friday for sure.
I mean, if that's okay, I think then uh I, I would uh take a motion in regards to this item from council. Uh councilman Lake Band?
Yes, I make a motion to continue this on the twenty eighth.
Your second? Uh councilmember Jensen?
I will second that.
Ready? Cast your votes.
McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Gerger?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Lake Band? Motion carries eight zero over here.
Uh next item is item number four. Uh councilmember Yurger, item motion to approve reconsideration of COVID nineteen compensation plan. Uh councilman Yurger?
Yes, I put this on the agenda and asked that this matter be returned for consideration. Um and I'm making the request because after casting my vote on this issue, I find that I lacked a certain amount of clarity about certain of the written terms of the COVID nineteen compensation policy and some of the oral explanatory statements that were made by staff at the time. And another concern that I have is that during the course of that meeting, we didn't offer an opportunity for public uh input or comment at that meeting at all. And so for those reasons, I'd like the opportunity to get some clarity on this tonight and uh to consider my vote accordingly.
Any questions um at this time? Uh comments from the public? Uh Roger Cruz? Uh Roger? You have the floor? Can you uh unmute yourself? You did do that and then, and you went back on again. Uh we'll come back to you. Uh four oh two seven one nine 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 two.
Thank you kindly. Um I appreciate Mr. Yurger bringing this um back to the table because the written language was different than the testified language.
We're back. Do you miss this white? Did you mute her?
I think she's no longer on the meeting. So hopefully she calls back.
Any other comments from the public?
It looks like we have her back.
Robin, you have the floor?
Yes, I'm so sorry. I don't know what happened. That was odd. Um so as I was saying, thank you to Mr. Yurger for uh bringing this uh forward as the language was different than the testified language, the written versus the testified. So um I would like to see written clarif- clarification um and perhaps job titles of people who are considered essential. Um and the only other comment I have is um the governor recommended that only essential time-sensitive matters would be heard, heard during this um pandemic. So besides claims, what else is considered an emergency on this agenda? Thank you.
Any other comments in the public? Uh comments from council? Uh councilmember Yurger?
Well, I'm, I guess I'm not quite sure just exactly where we are. I, I asked to have this brought back for reconsideration. We haven't considered that yet, that we're taking input and dialogue. So are we going to ask questions as though this has been brought back or what, what protocol are we following here?
Uh that's my fault. Um I, I was reading below and not reading the overall uh dialogue. So uh at this time, we would have to take a motion to reconsider uh the item uh by council. Uh councilman Yurger?
Well, I would certainly make a motion to bring this back for reconsideration.
Uh councilmember Jacobus?
I'll second the motion.
Cast your votes.
Lake Band? Councilman Lake Band?
I thought we discussed this quite a bit last time, so I'm gonna vote no.
Councilman Jacobus?
Yeah.
Councilman Jensen?
Yes.
Councilman Yurger?
Yes.
Councilman Bechtel?
No.
Councilman Coons?
Yes.
Councilman Ellis?
Yes.
Councilman McLean?
Yeah.
Motion carries six two.
Uh motion passes. Uh councilman Yurger?
Well, um I guess I would there's an echo on my line. I'm not sure why. So I guess I would ask staff I'm getting the delay. I can just ask, but let me unmute me. Okay. Sorry. Uh so I guess I would start with asking staff to perhaps revisit the discussion that we had versus the uh policy statement that we have in front of us. I brought my old one. I don't, it wasn't in the packet of we originally in discussion of the two and a half times pay. As I understood the explanation, if you're at home and not working initially like in item A because you've been told to, to stay there or whatever, because then you're just gonna receive your hourly rate. But if you're actually working at home, then the two and a half times pay kicks in. Is, was that the statement that I heard orally?
Yes.
And so even though you're working at home and not subject to public facing, you know, you're not, you're not involved in the public. Uh you're working at home. Uh where I came from, working at home actually was a, a benefit uh that we would love to have had to be able to work from home rather than go into the office. Uh and I guess I'm curious as to why, if you can work at home and not be exposed, we would be applying the two and a half times pay at that point for work done in that fashion. Just wanted to be clear, that's what we said we were going to be doing.
So what we, um we figured was is if you're home, first of all, there is probably I think maybe one oh, sorry, Brian Newton, City Administrator. I think there's one or two essential employees that would actually, remember, these are all hourly employees who this applies to. Um we can only think maybe one or two that would actually, that would fit, that would actually be home and get the two and a half times and it would be for small increments. Uh we have one particular position, uh for instance, that we don't want them to come in. We would want them to work from home because it's only gonna take about an hour, hour and a half in the morning to get what they get done. So yes, they're gonna get two and a half times because we really don't want them to come in.
But you would agree there's no health risk for those folks that are working in that environment?
No, there's no health risk.
Okay. Then one of the other things that I wasn't clear on was with regards to um callback and overtime. There was a note in here that said existing callback and overtime provisions remain in place and are in addition to the pay above. So there must be some sort of callback and overtime provision that increases pay, I guess, I'm not sure. And that would be two and a half times those increases as well.
So the uh callback provision is in place because by union contract or certain provisions, when they get called back. So we had to make sure that those were applicable during the situation. As far as the overtime, this exceeds the overtime rate and so they're not eligible to get overtime because the two and a half would be in excess of the overtime.
So can you give me an example of? Take a stand, I don't know, make up a value. Twenty, if you're, if you're making twenty dollars an hour and you have a callback and you have overtime provisions and two and a half times pay additions, what's the, what's the rate that you would be making as, if you were on callback and overtime?
So if you're making twenty dollars an hour regular, two and a half times that. So that's for forty, fifty dollars an hour, that's two and a half times. The reason the callback is in there because by union contract, um some employees get a guaranteed two hours when they get called back. And so they get, would get an overtime rate of two, two hours minimum. And so they would get two and a half times for those two hours minimum.
So that would be in addition, in addition to the fifty dollars that you said those additional?
No, that is the, that is the rate.
Okay.
This reason we had to put in there, there are certain union provisions on callback that still apply.
There was another footnote in here, I think that was okay, employees being paid to stay at home are subject to on-call or callback requirements, so remain fit, available for work. Understand that in general, but one of the items that we discussed was a quarantine of the uh employees that would work at the DU facility itself. Sounded like in the explanation that we were given, they would actually be quarantined and living on-site and not leaving the power plant. Is that correct?
Yeah, that they would apply to, um currently applies to fire. They stay, they stay and spend the night. It would apply to police. There's an agreement you've got coming up on the agenda where they would stay at Masonic Lodge. They would be quarantined in place. Plus, we would have uh workers at the power plant quarantined in place. We've set up uh sleeping quarters there. Um so they'll spend, I think, twelve days on-site.
So for those that are quarantined, the, the policy that was enacted, the two and a half times pay is essentially for a twenty-four hour shift or a work shift and then off-time?
Correct. Just their work shift. So if they were twelve-hour days during their So if they were twelve-hour days during their off-time, they sleep, they don't get paid that.
So that would be a base rate?
No, zero. I mean, they don't get paid because.
Well, they're not getting paid at all for sleeping on-site.
Correct.
One of the things that I found that wasn't in here, and it wouldn't necessarily be part of the compensation plan, but it would have been part of the overall policy, and that is, would some of this have been necessary at all, perhaps, if in fact, public buildings like this facility that we're in tonight was closed to the public and therefore had no public access? That is, if you needed to talk to an inspector or permit person, you would make a call and documents could be brought, but the building would be closed. Or so that the employees that we have are not exposed. Because it seemed to me this was an all-encompassing-type policy, which basically put everybody in the category of, of risk-enhanced, when in reality, we could protect a lot of employees without having put this into place for as many people. And it wasn't clear in the policy just exactly how this was going to be applied. That was one of my concerns.
So back in the delivery of services, when we went to level three and four, level three, we cut back on staff just to lessen the risk. Level four, we do exactly what you said. We close every building to the public, everybody goes home, only essential personnel are the ones that are working.
And that appeared to be something that we discussed orally, but I don't see that specifically distinguished in the policy between level three and level four. And that was one of the things that I was having some trouble with, as to, well, where do you draw the line between when you're in level three and when you're in level four? And are there a difference in, with regards to which personnel are getting salary adjustment treatment versus those that are just at home?
So the compensation plans, plan applies regardless whether in three and four, it's just the number of employees that are on staff. Three, there are more employees. Four, there are very few, only the essential ones are on level four. And part of that delivery plan, their items, the job titles were listed, who was exactly essential, and at the bottom was the count of the number of folks that were essential.
That was in our original packet material?
No, it was something I emailed out to you in advance several weeks ago. This is just the compensation. The other is not a policy, it's just guidelines.
Okay, I'll yield the floor to anyone else that has questions. I may have some others.
Thanks. Before you go, the item D there, so Jennifer, I think I may have misstated, because we have an item D, and that's directed to be sheltered in place longer than twenty-four hours, shall we pay the regular hour rate for sheltered in place? Plus, so you're right, so where they're sleeping, they do get regular time, because we're keeping them there. Plus, they would get one and a half times hourly rate for the hours they actually work. So the twelve hours they're on shift, they get two and a half. While they're sleeping, they get paid regular time. Because we have them quarantined on-site.
Councilmember McLean?
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in on this. I don't have the policy, unfortunately, in front of me. I guess I should have, knowing this was coming up for reconsideration, so I apologize. It's down on my kitchen counter. But the reason I kind of agreed with Brad to bring this back for reconsideration is I do think there was some misunderstanding on the part of the public and some other people, as far as the two and a half times for working at home. And I, I did call the day of the meeting and speak with Brian Newton about this and express a concern, and was, you know, told basically what he just said tonight, that it's not gonna happen very often, so it's kind of a non-issue. But I do think the optics of it are a little bit not great, because I, none of us, I don't think, have a problem with, with the notion of an employee who's in harm's way getting hazard pay, so to speak. I think we all can say that, we get that. But I think it is hard to understand getting two and a half times pay if you're able to work at home, when so many people, you know, that just doesn't seem to be the norm. So I, I do think it might be helpful to clarify that in the policy. I would like to suggest that maybe if it's possible, we could put this, I hate to do this again with another item, but not having something specifically to really even consider and vote on tonight makes it hard to, I think, take any other action. Maybe Brad and myself, we could weigh in with, with Brian Newton between now and Friday and, and get something put back out. Because I'm not sure we can really resolve this here in this setting tonight without specific language in front of us.
I mean, if you want to eliminate at-home, item B, just simply say, whether at-home, you just take that out. You say on-the-job site, so employee scheduled to work on-the-job site. Now that, when they're at, when they're at home, they're only getting regular time.
Does that address everything, Brad, that you would have, or is really there still more for you? I guess for me, that was the only rub.
We'll go to Councilmember Jensen first.
Yes, I was just gonna basically prepare what Lyndon and Evan said. It, optically, it looks terrible. It's two and a half times we pay from home, but as, as I had conversations with Mr. Newton also, as I understand, we're talking about maybe two employees and not full-time at that. It, it sounds much worse than it really is. In my mind, I, I was just gonna ask Brian to make sure I'm understanding correctly about the, about the pay for the union contracts and stuff. I know there's, there's two-hour callback, and that kind of stuff. And if they're in, if they're in getting the two and a half times, they would be paid whichever was greater, but not both. Is that correct?
Correct. I mean, they, I think you muted, you might have muted, no. They just get the two and a half times, because it exceeds the overtime rate. Yeah, so they don't get a compound.
Councilmember Jacobus?
Am I on?
Yep.
My comment was if they're directed to go home or work from home. And if there's anything specific work to do, there could always be continuing ed or other paperwork to get done. I would agree with both Ms. McLean, Councilwoman McLean, and Councilman Yurger. That should be whether you're working from home or not, or taking classes, whatever, that that can continue to be at a regular rate. I'd be cautious as far as the shelter in place. Make sure that it isn't just allowing for shifts, change, et cetera. Because once they get sheltered in place, that's not necessarily quarantined, they're gonna continue contact. I don't know why, under level three, we don't close down City Hall, or reduce any access of the public to City Hall, other than drive-through bill pay, notification as far as intention to get inspections done, or permits, et cetera. Very limited on any accessibility, rather than keeping it fully open. I think if we get to that level three or four, we need to consider closing as much as we can, employees off to the public, to protect the whole public and the employees.
Any other comments? Councilmembers?
Ryan, how much, how much research was done in this? Was there other cities that are doing stuff similar? I couldn't find a whole lot out there, so I'm just asking, where, how do we compare to other cities?
Been a lot of discussion about hazard pay, and that's exactly what it's been called across the industry. For instance, Grand Island right now is doing shelter in place from their power plant. They're paying double time. And so there has been a lot of discussion on the listservs across the United States about hazard pay. Some utilities are doing it. I mean, those that have power plants typically are paying some type of hazard pay for quarantine work. I, I've Googled and I kept Googling, and I watched the listservs. There's arguments back and forth both ways, that, oh, it's part of the job, employees should just be expected. You know, I say, you know, our employees are putting themselves in harm's way. They should be paid hazard pay. I will defend our employees day and day and night, that they should get more. Otherwise, what would keep them from simply calling in sick and staying home and getting regular pay? Nothing. We depend on them to keep us safe. We depend upon them to keep our utilities flowing. I can't afford not to have them here, and I will pay them whatever it takes to make sure we have them.
Councilman Yurger?
Well, I heard several comments from the other council members that gave me some additional pause with regards to this. The policy as written is truly one of those that's, it's rather broad. And even though we've talked again tonight about it being isolated and only probably targeting a few individuals, which aren't identified specifically in this policy statement. So it seems to me, and I would ask legal, this policy statement essentially as written applies across the board. There's no way to say that this just applies to specifically those that we would declare as being someone that we, essential personnel or whatever. This is a broad-based policy. And so that's one of my concerns, that I think if we were rewriting this, we need to take that granularity and put it in here, so that if other employees are sent home, and, and even if they're working at home, because they can in the jobs that they have, if they're not exposed, then this policy doesn't seem to be applicable. And I think that's where public concern and my concern rested. So I think there's detail that belongs in here, that's not here, and some clarity between level three and level four would have been helpful. And those are the kinds of things that need to come to fruition. And I, and, and I guess, I would ask legal if what I just said with regards to an overall broad-based policy versus essential personnel doesn't need to be narrowed.
You know, before Travis, before you weigh in, you know, Jennifer McGuffey, I know, was on the line. Troy, Shane, and Jennifer and I spent hours going through this. This policy is not general, it is very specific. And when you couple it, we're certainly not going to have excess employees called essential just so they get two and a half times. Why would we put our employees in harm's way? We will have the minimum that it takes to provide fire, police, and utilities and nobody else. We are certainly not willing to pay them two and a half times to, you know, to infect them with COVID. That's not what this is intended to be. This is very specific, only those essential employees that are absolutely necessary to keep, keep city services going. And so your example is an inspection. When we have to send an inspector out to inspect a job, yes, he's putting himself in harm's way. Yes, he would get two and a half times, and when he's done, he'll go back home. This is not a policy I don't think any employee wants to be used. It's certainly not something management wants to send our folks out just to get two and a half times paid.
And I think that was kind of the explanation I was thinking of in the materials that were provided for that special meeting. I think there was essential personnel by department kind of explained, but are there, is there an opportunity for someone to take advantage of this? I mean, of course there is.
No, there's not, because the supervisor wouldn't allow it. The supervisor has to approve any work that's being done at home or when they're called in for essential services. So no, the hourly employees don't get just to show up and say, I'm getting two and a half times. It doesn't work that way.
Yeah, exactly. I don't think you could make it any more specific unless you put example after example in there. It, it, it looks good to us. It's just basically, would the council accept the terms that are a part of the, part of the plan?
Councilman Ellis?
Ryan, you mentioned that you're getting information off of list servers for other utility companies. My concern is that I, I totally agree with you, we want to protect our utility workers. But to lump them in with the police and the fire, is there a way that we could be a little bit more specific with utility workers as opposed to police and fire? Right now, it appears everything is lumped. And so I, I do agree with Yurger, Councilman Yurger, that, that more specific here, I think, could help clarify and, and kind of clean up the optics of this. Because I, I know, I'm myself, I got hit a lot by citizens joking about this. And so I just think it would help if we could, we could do something here to, to clear some, some of the, the optics up and make it look a little better.
So I, I guess I'm not, I'm muted again, Tyler? Yeah. So I guess I'm not understanding the question. I mean, why are utility workers any different than fire and police? They show up, deal with the public, so you're not saying they're worth two and a half times?
No, I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, did you, you went out on the list server, and you were specifically saying utility workers. Is this the same kind of process that Columbus and Norfolk are doing with their police as well?
I don't know, Cor, Norfolk and Columbus is, I'm saying, the listserv, both on the utility side and the city side, has been really active on hazard pay. Some are doing hazard pay, some are not. So I say it's all over the place. But utility, fire, police, anybody, inspections, anybody that has to deal with the public, I think you're owed hazard pay.
Truly, the, the challenge is gonna come is that if we have to go to level four, I've heard Councilman Jensen say this several times in the last two weeks, is that we got a lot bigger problems than just going to level four. But if we have to go there, it's imperative that we have someone that is maintaining our wastewater treatment plant. It's imperative that we have a power plant that's being run by individuals every single day, because if the hospital loses power, we're in a world of hurt. And the essential employees, when we go to level four, is it same shift? It's, it's reduced employees. If you, if you read the document, it's reduced police force, it's reduced fire force. We, we're, they spend a lot of time as far as staff, talking to every department head, talking to both chiefs, who know their day-to-day operations of what they should and shouldn't be doing, and how this, the city should be handled in this type of, of catastrophic time. Quite frankly, I don't think, I, I personally don't think we're gonna get there. And, and I, I pray every night that we're not gonna get there, but if it does, we need to be, be prepared, and we need to take care of the employees that we put in harm's way.
Councilman Jensen?
I just, just my final comment was, I, that was one of the reasons I, I went ahead and voted to go ahead and reconsider this, is because some of the public had questions like this, and they wanted to hear it. I wanted to make sure it was out in front, and they did understand it. But at the end of the day, my vote is not gonna change. And once it's, once it's appropriate, I will, I will move to, I will make the motion to approve the COVID-19 compensation plan.
And, am I on?
Yeah.
Sorry. My commentary is to agree that paragraph A, it says employees are directed to go, employees directed to go home and/or working at home shall be paid regular hourly. That would be a change, that would be amending paragraph A. Paragraph B, employees scheduled to work, strike whether at home, but the paragraph would read employees scheduled to work and on-the-job site during the regular scheduled shift shall be paid the regularly hourly rate plus one and a half times hourly rate for actual hours worked. I would agree a hundred percent with what Mayor Getchman had said. I cannot imagine that we could have anything unmanned when it comes to utilities, whether it's water, wastewater treatment, the electricity, et cetera. And things always happen. So that said, I mean, we do need to make an amendment to this. If you're comfortable doing that now or wanting to wait until the following meeting, I guess I'd like to have some weigh-in on the other councilmen and where they want to see this be adjusted, but I would like to see this amendment prior to approval. So we make those changes, at least paragraph A and paragraph B. And I do trust that the directors of our departments and the supervisors that are in charge are gonna make the right decision, should we have to come down to that decision. But I still. But I still think if we are looking at even a level three, that we have to consider closing down access of the public to our employees as much as possible. And that should be some kind of consideration given for that.
I think I'm still, I think I'm still back on the discussion that Councilmember McLean brought up originally with regards to taking an opportunity to doing some revamp as might be necessary to this document. And one of the other things that I think would be extremely helpful, even though it may have been provided to council in the past, I don't know whether or not that information was ever shared with the public. But if we have essential personnel that fit into some of these categories and they're very limited personnel, then I'm not sure why we didn't attach that to this policy in the first place. So as to designate specifically how limited this might have in application versus how broadly it could be interpreted or misinterpreted by council or members of the public as well, to the extent that we need to have a policy. I, I don't disagree that those are in, those that are in jeopardy positions and facing the public, you know, they're, they're subjecting themselves to a hazard, just like doctors and nurses do on a daily basis to fight this. And, and they're doing it. And we need to do it as well in providing essential services. We may be able to do something additional and maybe we should, but I think this policy probably needs to be tweaked some. And I don't know that we should attempt to do it on the fly. I, I like Councilmember McLean, I think would be better bringing this back at the next meeting with whatever adjustments we'd like to have considered so that we have them. But I would like to see the essential personnel list attached to the policy so that we know the scope of what we're really talking about when we get into the upper stages.
The real challenge is, is if you take the time, number one, staff and department heads put a lot of time and effort into this. So I don't know who knows better than they do. So we need to be extremely careful here where, where we're headed. And I, I don't know if it's up to council to, to micromanage who's essential, who's not essential. I, I think the plan of, of who's home and not home and is probably, that could be tweaked really easy, but I, I, I think it's pretty clear based on the document of, of when we get to level four, what's happening and, and who, who is essential and, and, and and I, I think it, I think we need to be extremely careful and, and certainly if this gets continued, I think it needs to be, it can't be continued for weeks and weeks and weeks. It's, it's got to get, and it doesn't make us look good if we can't get past this. And, and, and again, this is a document put together by the department heads after they determined what they would need if we got to this point. And I rely on, on my department heads that we have in this community every day, what they need to make sure that the community is safe.
Councilmember McLean.
Yeah, just, I was trying to be brief here to wrap this up hopefully. I just want to reiterate, I never, ever had any issue at all with the hazard pay at two and a half times for any essential employees. My only issue was with the working from home at two and a half times. I, upon reconsideration of this in my own mind, as people have talked, I'm not sure we should be without a policy because God forbid if something did, horrible did happen, we need our employees, I think, to know that there is a plan in place. So I guess that said, I would just be in favor tonight of only just removing that reference to the two and a half times pay for people working from home. Everything else to remain the same. And then perhaps if, if possible, maybe there could be some other discussions offline if, if council members have a concern about other aspects of it. So that would be my thought at this moment.
Councilmember Coons.
Oh yeah, I'd like to just kind of weigh in a little bit. I agree with what Councilmember McLean just said about the two and a half times to pay. But also if you look at it, and, and I'm just throwing this out here because I'm confused about it. If you send an employee home and he's not going to work, he's going to get his regular pay. If you send in an employee home and he is going to work, he's going to get just his regular pay. To me that, there's, there's a difference in what's actually going on there. Is it worth the two and a half times more? That I don't know. But I, I think it is essential. I agree with the mayor that we do need to get this handled as quickly as possible. I'd like to see it wrapped up tonight, I guess. The way I'm looking at this whole thing is this is all new to us. We've never ever been in a situation like this in our lifetimes. If we go to level three or we go to level four, I'm looking at that as people's health at risk. There's people dying, you know, we have to look at this like this is a new wave of a different type of battlefield. And decisions have to be made on the battlefield because the battlefield is constantly changing, different challenges. And I think when push comes to shove, when we go to level three and level four and we need those things to keep running, I don't, you know, our electricity, our heat, you know, our water, our sewer. I don't think people are really going to nitpick on who is declared who is essential and who is not. In the end, it's going to be do whatever it takes to get my utilities back, do whatever it takes to get my water back. And then, you know, having gone through that flood last year, that brought me back to a lot of reality. You know, not having gas heat, not having hot water, those things, you know, when you're warming your hands up over a toaster, you're looking at life from a different perspective. And, and I'm assuming this is just going to be on a really, really bigger scale. I think we need to just kind of wrap this up tonight and make sure we've got something on the books.
Councilmember Jacobus.
I'd like to make a motion to amend paragraph A and B as was discussed. Employees directed to go home and/or working at home shall be paid regular hourly rate during their regularly scheduled shift. Paragraph B, employees scheduled to work and on the job site during their regular scheduled shift shall be paid regularly hour rate plus 1.5 times, et cetera, as stated. Those are my two changes I'm proposing to move forward with this. I make the motion to amend it as stated.
Councilman Lakeban.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I, I agree with Mr. Jacobus, but I just want to make sure Brian Newton is fine with these changes before we vote on that.
Yes, I'm fine.
And I second. We have a motion in a second. Ready? Cast your votes. Lakeban.
Yes.
Jacobus.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Yerger.
Yes.
Bechtel.
Yes.
Coons.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero, Mayor. Councilmember Jensen.
Yeah, on that, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the amended COVID-19 compensation plan.
Councilmember Jacobus.
I'll second it.
You say has amended, Mark?
Yes, I seconded.
He did.
Oh, he did, okay.
Ready? Cast your votes. McLean.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Coons.
Yes.
Bechtel.
Yes.
Yerger.
No.
Jensen.
Yes.
Jacobus.
Yes.
Lakeban.
Yes.
Motion carries seven one, Mayor. Before we move to the public hearing, we'll take a 10-minute break.
And I forget the street, then it's going to run right through the subdivision. And in light of the concerns that we had with potential flooding and should we have had a breach of the rawhide to the north, I'm just concerned if that was fully evaluated in light of circumstances that we experienced during the major flooding and, and whether that raised any concerns at all for the engineer.
I, I would defer to Dave Gotikin, our engineer, who reviewed all of the grading and drainage calculations. I understand that they were submitted not only at the time of the preliminary plat, but also at the time of the final plat as well.
This is Dave Gotikin, Director of Public Works. I have reviewed the drainage calculons. And they are consistent with city policy and is consistent with good engineering practice. You are, you are correct, Councilman. Your part of this subdivision does go north to the Rawhide Creek. Actually goes out to road and then goes up to Rawhide Creek. And then part of the subdivision drains south into that drainage way that runs through the subdivision there, south of this area.
Councilmember Jacobus.
Mr. Gotikin, question for you. Mr. Landholm had raised an issue not quite two years ago about this area and how a culvert was to have been installed in this area to help with drainage so it didn't continue to back off into the Washington Heights area. Has that been addressed or is that something that's on the table to be addressed for this area?
I believe that's the Jones Street culvert.
Yes.
It's, there's really no plans for that right now, but as this subdivision develops out, obviously it's a multi-phase project. At the point where they extend Jones Street under Ridge, there will have to be a culvert of some kind built over the ditch on Ridge Road that will accept that drainage. It's kind of an drainage system because the culverts that come off of like the airport, there's bit that comes out of that pond that's along Highway 30. And then those fields there to the, I guess, west, that would be west and north, come into that drainage ditch on the Rawhide Creek. And the majority of that goes north. I think that goes back to an agreement many years ago with the Washington Heights original developers, the fathers, grandfathers, that type of thing, where they expended some time and effort to expand on that drainage way to, to push the water north directly over to the Rawhide Creek. And that's kind of the plan that's still in place, but some of it just goes south and goes through Washington Heights. And when that culvert is installed, you know, that takes all into account and will continue to try to push some of that drain. And I'd prefer to keep as much going north to directly into the creek as we can versus going through the subdivision. And it all ends up in the Rawhide Creek. What takes longer to get there and more potential for overloading the system in that area otherwise.
It seems like any kind of a hefty rain, a lot of that area gets saturated very quickly and the water doesn't move anywhere. And that's on the east side of that road, east side of Ridge, I believe.
Yeah, that's correct.
And back up.
That's correct. Part of that though is be, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, that's all right. Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say part of that is, is because it's undeveloped right now. As we look at expanding our city limits and then building up Ridge Road, that's one of the things that we will expand. It's the capability of that drainage way to get that water into the Rawhide Creek as fast as we can or to store it somewhere out there. But right now, it's kind of a, for lack of a better term, a rural road or a county road with just roadside ditches. And they're not particularly efficient. I mean, they, they work very good at storing water. But, you know, everything is very flat there and it's kind of just been designed by circumstances of, as the road was there, they put in road ditches. But as this land develops, we have to take a stronger look at how are we going to handle that water on them? And I think we can solve a lot of those problems at that time.
Is that a responsibility of the city or a city and developer or developer or the county? How is that going to play out as it develops? Because there's not a lot of land on the south side of the four lane left to develop. So whose responsibility will this ultimately be as it continues to develop?
I think it becomes a regional problem, honestly. But in that immediate area, let's say as we, as we expand on Country Club Estates, it will be annexed as developed or as its final platted, you'll annex it in pieces. And once it's, you know, it becomes more of a city issue versus a county issue. I mean, there'll be issues that are in the county park that's in the city. And the city does own, I'm not sure exactly how much, but we do own some land on the west side of, of Ridge Road there that has potential for, you know, some, some areas to store water as well. Right now, there, there are fields that are just farmed agriculturally. But possibly we could look at something like some detention cells and that type of thing over there. Just, just a way to hold some water versus letting it just kind of flood overland.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Councilmember Yerger.
I just have one final comment, which was one of the ones that I made earlier. But looking at the resolution that's associated with this final plat, it has conditions for the subdivision agreement. It has conditions for annexation which are discussed in the.
You're muted.
Sorry. The resolution that we're addressing here has conditions that were placed upon it with regards to the completion of the zoning and the subdivision agreement, which we have yet to taken up. And because we're not at liberty to discuss those items and this resolution is being conditioned on whatever we might do with those, I really would like to see this at this juncture delayed a week until the next meeting for approval of the final plat so that we can get to the zoning and condition and discussion of the subdivision agreement issues to see if we're in agreement there before we would pass this resolution that's conditioned on the two things we have yet to discuss. I wish we had done them in reverse order, quite honestly. But that's what I would, I would prefer that we take this up at the next meeting. Nothing against it. I just think we need to do it in the right order so that we don't have to have these conditions because they're on tonight's agenda.
Councilmember Jacobus.
Can we continue this until after the other consideration rather than make a decision and vote now? Continue this until, what is it, item 25 and 28 are heard? That are parallel to the consideration of this rather than have the conditions continue to be pushed? Go ahead and have consideration of the subdivision agreement and then annexation and then come back to this? Yet tonight?
I'm not, I'm, I'm sure we could. I'm not too sure. Travis, could you just weigh in? I mean, is there?
No.
It's the very next item we're going to is the zoning.
You, you could approve the resolution.
And the plat is, the plat, the final plat, you know, we, we approve preliminary and final plats all the time. So, and I believe it has conditions, but at the end of the day, the conditions are that the zoning is approved and, and, and actually the subdivision agreements approved and, and, you know, so quite frankly, if those aren't approved, what we did above doesn't matter.
Yes, I was just, what I was about to say, you could approve a final plat that eventually never has a development on it. The, you can either approve the final plat and get to the next items or if, if you want to, there still are concerns, you could approve the final, final plat conditioned upon the following items being approved. The other items being approved. But you could handle the item now without having to move it.
Any other comments? I would take a motion in regards to Resolution twenty twenty oh fifty-five. Councilman Leggman?
I'm making a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash zero five five.
Councilmember McLean?
I'll second that.
I have a motion to second. Ready? Cast your votes.
Leggman?
Yes.
Jacobus?
No.
Jensen?
Yes.
Yurger?
No.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Motion carries six two, Mayor.
Moving to, uh, item twenty-five. Ordinance fifty-five twenty-nine to change zoning from R rural to SR suburban residential on property generally located between Ridge Road and Country Club Estates. This would be final reading. Uh, this time we'll have staff report.
Mayor, Members of the Council, Jennifer Damm, Planning Director. This is the third reading on the change of zone from R rural to SR suburban commercial. It is associated with the final plat that was just approved. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on February eighteenth and they voted to recommend approval five to zero with one abstention. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for, uh, Jennifer? Uh, Councilmember McLean?
Sorry, I think it was from the last item. I still had it up.
Any other questions?
I don't have it.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilmember Yurger?
Make a motion to approve ordinance fifty-five twenty-nine for final reading of change of zone from R to SR.
Is there a second? Uh, Councilman Leggman?
I will second that.
Cast your votes.
McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Yurger?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Leggman?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero, Mayor.
Now what, final reading?
An ordinance of the city of Fremont, Nebraska, amending ordinance number five four two seven as it pertains to the zoning map to rezone the property generally described herein as generally located at Armor Drive and Jones Drive extended Fremont, Nebraska from R rural to SR suburban residential, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability and providing effective date on final reading.
Cast your votes.
Leggman?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Yurger?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Uh, next item is item twenty-eight. Move to approve Country Club Estates sixth edition subdivision agreement. This time we'll have staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council, Jennifer Damm, Planning Director. Uh, this is the subdivision agreement for the Country Club Estates final plat. It's a standard subdivision agreement, uh, that we require of all developers. It spells out, uh, who pays for what costs. Uh, in essence, this agreement states that the city will review and approve the public improvement plans. The developer will record any necessary easements. The developer will receive all necessary permits and approvals. The city agrees to pay for the cost of oversizing, uh, the infrastructure. The developer will in reimburse the city for the cost of public street lighting. The developer will pay for and construct the cost of the water distribution system. Uh, the developer will construct and pay for the sanitary sewer system. And the developer will pay for and construct fire hydrants. Uh, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for, uh, our planning director? Comments from the public? Steve Harper? Uh, four oh two seven one nine 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 two.
Robin White, City of Fremont. The city shall review and approve public improvement plans that are prepared by the developer's engineer. Why are we approving something that we have not even seen yet? And, um, according to the subdivision agreement, the developer is required to record any necessary easements. Who will pay those recording fees? And the developer is required to receive all necessary permits and approvals from any government, uh, governmental entity prior to commencing work. Who's going to pay for those permits and approvals? The city agrees to pay the cost for oversizing of streets and oversized public improvements. So the plat said twenty-eight feet and the U, UDC says thirty-two feet. Why should the taxpayers pay for this? And why is the developer the lead agency on this and the responsible party to construct those streets? The next item says the city will construct the electric power system. The developer will pay seven hundred fifty dollars, single-family residence duplex or townhome. Is this figure reflected in our fee resolution? Who arrived at that figure and how? The developer will reimburse the city for the cost of public street lighting. Is that typical practice? Who decides on the type of lighting, et cetera? The developer, developer will construct and pay for the cost of the water distribution system. Does that include a lift station if one's necessary? Then who will own that system? And will, will the developer have to pay for the maintenance repairs and upkeep? The city will construct and pay for a natural gas system. Why this system? What is the reasoning that taxpayers have to pay for this? The developer will construct and pay for storm sewer and sanitary, sanitary sewer systems. Who will own the system? Then will the developer have to pay for the maintenance repairs and upkeep? The developer will pay for, construct and install fire hydrants. Who will own these? Then will the developer have to pay for the maintenance repair upkeep? Uh, the fiscal impact, the city will bear the cost of oversizing streets. Infrastructure, fifty percent of the cost of street signs and the future maintenance of public facilities. Is the city going to own the streets? What infrastructure is the city paying for? And why is the city paying for street signs that someone else gets to name? Is that typical? And finally, why is the developer the lead agency on all improvements? Thank you very much.
Uh, Julie, you're up.
Okay. Yeah, I would just echo the comments, uh, of the lady before me, but my main concern is always drainage. And Mr. Geddicky had mentioned that we might need a retaining pond for this particular development. And I would like to see that there was some communication with Dodge County since you will be putting water into the Rawhide Creek, which ends up in the county on the east side of town. And if there is a need for a holding pond, that needs to be in the original plan. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Uh, comments from council? Uh, Councilmember Jacobus?
I'd like to have some of these questions answered before we move forward on this. One of them that got brought up, unnecessary easements are required. Who pays for the filing on that to the courthouse? And is that fee in our schedules or is that something that we absorb as a city entity? Who can answer that, Brian? And that, as you're looking, Brian, I would assume though, when it comes to the storm sewer, sanitary systems, fire hydrants, natural gas, water distribution, public street lighting, et cetera. Once those are built and this moves forward with completion, that we will end up owning these as we will take hold of the streets when inspection is done because I understand we pay for intersections and tie-ins to our main streets. So some of that oversizing that was brought up, is there an issue of concern in that probably fault of Mr. Godikin?
Brian, you're muted.
So, um, as far as the infrastructure, yes, we, contractor, developer pays for it. It always turns over to the city. We own it, maintain it from there on. If you look in section two, standards authority, uh, B, it says prior to commencing work, uh, the developer lead agency is responsible construct. Developer shall first colon, and if you look at number two, obtain and file any permanent easements. So they have to obtain and file them. So yes, they file all these.
And then, um, it was brought up by Julie about the drainage plan. And that falls, I believe, towards Mr. Godikin. Um, putting more water into the Rawhide is a concern because we know that, um, during this last incident that, um, or excuse me, March two thousand nineteen, the Rawhide was in jeopardy of over eight banks on North Nine. Um, until some things got addressed out in the county. That said, um, Rawhide typically takes on a fair amount of water. Is there any issue of concern with you, Mr. Godikin, that we need to be, um, talking sooner than later about, um, some kind of a detention pond? Something to temporarily detain the water to let it filter out to the Rawhide?
Uh, their, their engineering calculation did not include that. Uh, that, that was done way back at the preliminary design phase. But on this particular project, uh, they probably provided way more at the preliminary point than they were required to. So all that information is still valid because they haven't changed it significantly enough that would affect the drainage, uh, calculations. But having said all of that, that, I mean, they don't include, uh, as I recall, any detention on the site, uh, other than, you know, you can do a few things with sumps in the street, uh, you know, you slow it down in people's yards, that sort of thing. Uh, but there is none on site. When I was referring to earlier is that if we look at this, I'll call it regionally, outside of this subdivision and the Washington Heights subdivision in that, that area right in there, we probably are going to need to look at something down the road. But it will not be within this subdivision itself.
There's been a lot of concern prior and there was actually pictures brought at one time in this area, um, multiple pictures of the flooding, et cetera. And this is prior to March of two thousand nineteen. So this area is a issue of concern prior to any further development. So would appreciate anything that the city can do to sit down with the county and address some of this sooner than later. And I realize we're going to be in some financial constraints, but this area has historically been an issue of concern for drainage. And I appreciate, um, Julie bringing this back to the table as well as Miss White.
Any other comments from council? Uh, Councilmember Yurger?
I just have a couple of follow-ups, I guess, uh, to what has already been discussed so far. Uh, this is out in the area of the airport. And I don't recall, uh, specifically anything in the subdivision agreement. And maybe there's nothing required given how far east of the airport this is and what's being proposed for development in the subdivision. But I'm going to ask the question anyway. Is there any height restriction that we need to be concerned about with regards to the plan to build here? That should have been spelled out in the subdivision agreement if it's more than two-story home?
No.
No. Okay. One of the other questions that I had is this subdivision's not going all the way out to Ridge Road yet. This is a, a parcel which is east of Ridge Road yet. So we don't need to have anything at this juncture. We'll address it as need be in the extension that moves west with regards to Ridge Road paving participation, correct? Not necessary now because we're not close enough to Ridge Road.
Right, Dave, I don't think this goes all the way to Ridge Road. If it did, we'd be asking for a partial pavement of that road, right?
This does not go to Ridge Road. As they develop, like I say, we will continue to slide the city limit line over. And eventually then Ridge Road in that area will become annexed into the city. It's annexed already, the partway south of there. And then this will just continue that annexation farther north. And like I say, as it's annexed, then we will need to be addressing paving that road and then addressing the, the storm sewer as well.
Okay. And I see that, Dave, one of your recommendations was that this area needs to be annexed. And I think your original statement was annexed with approval of final plat. And of course, we just did that. And now we're into the subdivision agreement. And I'm looking at this and quite honestly, I'm a little perplexed with regards to what this agreement has in it, knowing that in this area of development, the third, fourth and fifth additions in this area uh, were preliminary platted and then voided after a couple of years, I think, because we never moved on any of that. And now what we're building into this subdivision agreement is a four-year hiatus with regards to building must commence within that period of time. Annexation wouldn't commence until that period of time. And not only then, we don't have a guarantee either because, uh, an extension could be granted again. And I guess if, I'm concerned about the fact that we have rezoned this. We've platted this multiple times in this area before and haven't had this come to fruition. And we're building something into the subdivision agreement that basically sort of circumvents the two years worth of, you're going to plat this thing and it's voided out after a couple of years. We're basically granting extensions into the four-year capability or beyond that with approval of the engineer. So we really don't have any assurance as to development or annexation. And that's a concern for me if we're drafting the document that has those parameters. And I'm wondering what your thoughts are and why we put that in relative to such, you know, a four-year extension with regards to building an annexation.
Jennifer, you can. Jennifer, you weigh in on the zoning. But I know the developer said this was going to take longer to develop. And he asked that we extend that to four years. And how does that relate to zoning, Jennifer?
You do not have to annex to be able to rezone a property. I think that that is an area that we probably ought to look at as we update our UDC and the comprehensive plan. Our current policy on annexation is just that we do voluntary annexations and that we don't do involuntary annexations. But other than that, there isn't a specific policy that stipulates a piece of property should be annexed at the time of final plat or preliminary plat or whatever. I think there are some valid issues on both sides of that question. But I think that it is something that we ought to study and then develop a policy on into the future. At this point, we have a number of developments that are going on in the city right now. We have the COVID concerns. And I think the developer wants to make sure, before he invests the money in engineering and the infrastructure, that the market for this development is actually there. And that's my understanding of why he's asking for the four-year term. He just wants a little more assurance that this is something that will certainly be marketable.
Do you agree that existing code, and correct me if I'm incorrect, but preliminary plats expire or are voided after two years?
A final plat.
No, preliminary, preliminary. I want to get a response on preliminary plat before we go to final.
I've got to tell you, Brad, I really have to, I don't have the UDC in front of me right now. So I'm not sure about the expiration on a preliminary plat. I do know that final plats expire after two years if infrastructure has not been put in place. And with this.
And that's why, that's why I raise the concern that I'm raising. Because the way item T and you are tied together, the developer could theoretically start the public improvements, but not construct fully what's being final platted here. And if so, there's no obligation to fulfill this or annex. If you don't do the whole final plat.
Well, the agreement says that it does need to be annexed prior to the installation of infrastructure.
But all of it, right? And so you wouldn't have to do all of it. You could start and quit. And then it would just sit.
That's, that's a possibility with any development.
Right, but now, but now we're exceeding two, we're going beyond the two years and going to four years with the start and stop. That's my point. The whole, my hope, the whole point of my question is we're extending beyond for this subdivision, the two years normally allotted for your plat.
It is, yes, you're correct. It is being expected two years.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacobus?
Why are we extending that? This was on the burner long before the COVID concern issue. But why is that extension in there? That does seem odd because it is typically two years. So why a special allowance for four? Specifically, why four?
Again, that's something that was requested by the developer. The administration was satisfied with it, and it's being presented to the city council.
So as we refine the UDC, which has been riddled with some issues here and there on a fairly consistent basis, what is followed? We have missed the night and let four years in. Within the four years, we will have looked at a new comprehensive plan and hopefully tweaked and updated the UDC to meet the comprehensive plan that I'm sure is going to change quite a bit. What's followed?
So this is the agreement for this subdivision. Just like Gallery 23 has their subdivision agreement and all of the other, Brooks Hollow, all of the other developments have their agreements. Those would predate and take precedence over any changes to the UDC or to the comprehensive plan. However, moving into the future, it seems clear that those are issues that we really need to address as we move forward.
Seems like a request to go to four years on this, especially with the layout as it is. I'd be more comfortable just keeping it at typical two rather than doing an extension. I'm not aware that that is a request that we have to do in order to move forward.
I would, I would stress and just, you know, the developer has developed almost every bit of Washington Heights. And as you go through this entire process, plus now developing Morningside Point. They've done exactly what they said they would do at Morningside Point. You're not dealing with a developer that doesn't follow through. So, you know, I think we give leniency to people that come in and develop that have never developed here before more than we give our own developers, but that live and give back to the community and, and all the things that they do. So I would just say, I would, you know, I would, I would say there's, there's reasons. Economics is probably one of them. But at, but at the end of the day, you know, I don't think this is, every bit of this takes money. And I don't think this is a project that it fits right into where they're already developing and they're in the process of building the last houses. And, and so the next step, there is no lots there. So the next step is to develop these 18 lots. So I don't foresee this being an issue. But, you know, council's got to do what they, what they need to do. So Councilman Yurger?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the subdivision agreement, item T and U. In particular, in item T, I'd like to change the four years to two years and strike the last sentence that says the engineer may approve an extension of time. And then in paragraph U, I would like to change the four years to two years because that two-year period coincides with our UDC final plating instructions as it sits today. And I think we should follow the rules. That's my motion.
Is there a second? Councilmember Jacobus?
I'll make a second on that.
Mr. Mayor? So striking that engineering thing would be unique. All the other agreements have the engineer may approve an extension. The two years, you're right, that has been consistent with what we've done in the past. But the engineer thing should stay. That's been in all the other subdivision agreements.
Has, and legal, you've seen the subdivision agreement?
Yes. I believe we do have a motion and a second, though, so we should vote.
I get that. We will. I just want to ask a question.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
Lake Band?
No.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Jensen?
No.
Bechtel?
No.
Yurger?
Yes.
Coons?
No.
Ellis?
Yeah.
McLean?
No.
Motion fails five to three.
Now I would take a motion in regards to this item. Councilman Coons?
Make a motion to approve Country Club Estates' sixth edition subdivision agreement.
Councilman Lake Band?
I will second that.
Cast your votes.
McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Yurger?
No.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
No.
Lake Band?
Yes.
Motion carries six to mayor.
Next item is, in new business, is item 26. Resolution 2020-078 redevelopment agreement for Holstone Farms redevelopment project on property generally located at East Cloverly Road and South Flat Avenue, Dodge County, Nebraska. This time, we'll have staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Jennifer Dam, planning director.
Yes.
This is the same project that we looked at previously with the Community Development Authority. It is approving the redevelopment agreement for the Holstone Farms project. The redevelopment plan and redevelopment project were previously approved. The minimum project valuation for this is $128,550,000. It will be constructed over nine phases. The total TIF indebtedness is authorized at $23,455,000, again, over the nine phases. And the agreement establishes the terms and uses of the indebtedness. If there are any more questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Is there questions for our planning director at this time, Jennifer Dam? Councilmember Yurger?
I don't have a question for Jennifer Dam. I do have a question I'd like the clerk to check. My notes indicate that we voted to move items 25 and 28 into seven and voted to move item 32. I don't recall us moving these other items. And so I'd like to check the order of the agenda, please.
I wrote down that items 25, 28, 26, and 27 would be moved behind number seven. And then item number 32 would be moved above item eight. Items five and six would be removed.
My apologies. Stand corrected. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? By council? Any comments from the public? Tom Houston?
Redevelopment agreement was previously discussed concerning the agenda for the CDA, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Houston at this time? Any questions from the public?
Thank you kindly. Robin White, Fremont, Nebraska. I have one question. I've had several members of the public ask. They would like to know what other entities have given funds to this project. Thank you kindly.
Any other comments in the public? Comments from council? I would take a motion in regards to this item. Councilmember Jacobus? You're on.
Yeah, I was just going to respond to Ms. White's question. The only thing that I am aware of that we've extended was LBA 40 funds of $1.3 million that was approved at a prior meeting. And I believe that was March 31st. So just answer that question. That's all.
Any other comments from council? I would take a motion in regards to this item. Councilman Coons?
Make a motion to approve the redevelopment agreement of the Holstone Farms project.
Councilman Lake Band?
I will second that.
Cast your votes.
McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
No.
Coons?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Yurger?
No.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Lake Band?
Yes.
Motion carries six to mayor.
Item 27. Resolution 2020-079 for schedule of assessments, levying a special tax assessment and assessments for sanitary sewer district number SD-704-18. This time, we'll have staff report.
Dave Goddigan, Director of Public Works, City Engineer. This, you, this met us, the Board of Equalization, earlier in the meeting to set the assessments for sewer districts 704-18. This resolution formally adopts the actions of the Board of Equalization by the city council.
Any questions for Public Works Director? Any comments from the public?
Robin White, Fremont, Nebraska. Can Mr. Goddigan please explain to the public how an SID is paid for by the taxpayers, specifically how the public benefits from an SID? Thank you kindly.
Public Works Director Goddigan?
Okay.
It's actually, this isn't an SID. It's a sewer district.
Yeah, I think the official term is sewer extension district. I mean, we just call it sewer district, just in our labeling. The public benefits is that there's another public line that the city owns. However, in this case, it's assessed to the budding property owners or the benefiting property owners, and they pay for it. They were in a situation where they were either going to have to fix and repair a private main on their own and pay a plumber to do it or petition the city to form a sewer district to use public funds upfront to, to design it and build it to city standards. And then, at this point, approving favorable vote on the resolution, then they are assessed for it and they have those 15 years to pay it. So it's kind of a win-win. I mean, the beneficiaries or the property owners affected get a public main that they no longer have to maintain. And the city gets a public main that's up to standards now. So like, like the rest of the sewers in town. I mean, these are, the city would not even allow a neighborhood to build up. But I believe there was a main, which is substandard to drain six, seven, eight homes anymore. I mean, everything now would be done under public standards, which is an eight-inch minimum sewer line.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Comments from council? I would take a motion in regards to this item. Uh, councilmember Jacobus?
I'd make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty oh seventy-nine.
Uh, councilmember Jurger?
Uh, second her motion.
Cast your votes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Jurger?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Leggman?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero here.
Next item is, uh, item thirty-two, councilmembers Jensen, McLean, and Leggman, item ordinance fifty-five thirty to amend section two dash one oh eight of the Fremont Municipal Code to include a rule limiting the time for discussion and debate of agenda items. This time I would, uh, turn it over to, uh, Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. I'd like to, uh, could I get a stopwatch? Put on, I'd like to have this time, please.
Go ahead.
This is to, uh, amend section one, chapter two, article one, section two dash one oh eight, the meeting rules of conduct. As it over the past year, the Fremont City Council meetings have become routinely long and excessively cumbersome. A recently vote to end at eleven, eleven-thirty have caused, uh, carryover items. Uh, we've become unable to move forward with the more important business of the city in an efficient and timely manner. Uh, small minority council members monopolize large blocks of time without regard for efficiency of the meeting. This situation at times inhibits others on council from feeling they can participate without extending and slowing down the meetings even further. Citizens of Fremont pay for legal services at these meetings at a cost of two hundred dollars an hour. We should be respectful of that fact and work to become more efficient. Uh, the public and interested parties also endure unnecessary hardships in not having their issues or concerns heard in a reasonable and timely manner. Citizens with employment or other time constraints are dissuaded from participating in local government, at least in part because of the length of our council meetings. Late night meetings and held over items are contrary to openness and transparency in government. This proposal will provide for procedures to conduct our meetings in a more equal, timely, and efficient manner. This would benefit all of Fremont. Uh, fiscal impact would be the possible savings of some legal fees. Uh, the recommendation here is to approve, uh, wait, I'd like to ask, wait first and second readings and move to the final reading of ordinance fifty-five thirty. So the purpose of this language is, just to simply put, a council member may speak on an agenda item for up to five minutes before allowing all fellow council members the same opportunity. In the unlikely event that each council member uses their allotted time, that would be forty minutes. It would end council debate, but not, I repeat, not end the public comment. In almost every circumstance, council members would then have the opportunity to speak again, but for no more than a maximum of five additional minutes before moving onto action. Uh, language already exists under these rules of conduct to suspend any rule of conduct with a vote of council. These proposed rules would fall under that guideline also. I expect this would be involved much more frequently with a few items that truly require more extensive discussion. I expect the rules to be left in place for the many items that truly do not. Free speech does not and should not mean unlimited speech by any single individual. My objective here is we should have a framework where all people from all walks of life are encouraged to observe and/or participate in their government and not dissuaded from it. Uh, this action has been deemed by some as being a backroom deal. I did pull some of the council members to see if there was sufficient support before moving forward with it. If that makes it a backroom deal in your mind, then so be it. This action has been deemed by others as an attack on your personal freedom of speech. So no further restrictions are being placed on public participation. Uh, all council members will share an equal opportunity, albeit under some time considerations. I wish to make it abundantly clear that this action was not initiated by the mayor or anyone on city staff. Of course, we reached out for legal counsel and some fact finding. That's what they're there for. I disagree with it if you choose, but understand that I own it with support from others on council. I sincerely believe this is a fair and just path to move for more efficient council meetings, better engagement for those who wish or need to participate in our meetings, and more equal representation from all Fremont citizens. I will work to implement this action, engage all my fellow council members, whether they stood with, stood, excuse me, whether they stood with this in the beginning or not. Thank you. And that was four minutes. I think I displayed a lot of, uh, opinion and some facts, and, uh, we can do this.
Questions, uh, councilmember Jurger? Any other comments or questions for? Any questions at this time for Councilman Jensen? Any comments from the public? Uh, four oh two, seven two oh nine seven eight five. You have the floor, sir, or whoever. Sorry. Four oh two, seven two oh nine seven eight five.
Attempting to muzzle the voices of duly elected council representatives is no different than attempting to limit the free speech of public they serve. Many constituents have chosen to rely on having a representative government because they cannot or don't, do not want to speak directly for themselves. Instead, they rely on their duly elected ward representatives or other council members that are willing to do that for them. To get their issue of concern on the council's agenda, council members must do the work for them and be their spokesperson. And that person, they must then often research and persuasively present the requester's case before adding any of their own commentary. And when council members or council members and staff join up to attempt to tackle and resolve difficult issues in order to effect compromise, someone has to become the advocate spokesperson. Should this time be counted against the spokesperson? On regular agenda issues, council members are expected to read, understand, or research the issues. Ask the questions they or the public may want asked. They then, they need to, uh, share these thoughts and positions so that the public doesn't have to do the, that work for themselves. This work is required because the public, public elects council members to do that work for them. They expect that council will collectively discuss and make wise and fully informed decisions, not just blindly approve matters that could ultimately adversely impact the health, safety, and well-being of the taxpaying public they serve. Make no mistake, limiting a council member's ability to fulfill their duty to the count, uh, to the thousands of citizens they represent is no different than telling each citizen that they can't or shouldn't be heard or effectively representative, uh, representative. If the council's administration hadn't changed the structure of the city government in order to consolidate power and control in a single administrative position, which shifted approval responsibility to the council. And if the administrative, uh, administration council are communicated more openly, timely, transparently, and effectively with the council. And if it didn't regularly, regularly schedule between twenty-five to forty agenda items for the council's consideration, or if each council member actually came fully prepared to speak and contribute, or at least listen to those that do, the meetings could potentially be shorter. The crafters of this ordinance imply that forty items could or should be done in as little as fifty minutes. It would be one agenda item every one point two five minutes of the forty-minute maximum occurred for each agenda item. The meeting would be a marathon lasting more than twenty-six hours. If one wants council meetings to last between fifty and one hundred and twenty minutes, then the council would need to act on average within five to twelve minutes if there are only ten agenda items. And within two point five to six minutes if there were twenty agenda items. Pushing items through at this pace would not likely to promote high-quality results or high levels of public competence in the city council, given the public's general skepticism and the lack of trust in the city governance. Assume for a moment that the city's-
Ma'am?
Yes.
Uh, first of all, I need to have you state your name. Uh, you failed to do that at the beginning, and then, uh, you'll have about a minute to wrap things up.
April Rogers, Fremont, Nebraska. Uh, assume for a moment that the city's staff takes about three minutes to represent a staff report, and the council collectively uses only eight minutes to discuss and debate issues. And then applicant or a public adds more, more, three, three more minutes. And the clerk takes one minute to hold, record, and read the results in action. That's fifteen minutes per agenda item. Applied to say even fifteen to twenty, twenty-five, forty agenda items. The meeting length would approach four hours in length. Add some routine, may, mayoral or cityal administrator comments and a few controversial issues, or several lawyers and a court reporter, and well, it's a recipe for something that's a lot longer than fifty minutes or even two hours. These fifty minutes to two-hour meeting targets may represent the meeting lengths from other cities, but they are devoid of com- comparative statistical assumptions or the credentialed, or credible statistical sampling data necessary, necessary to support the validity of graphics being used. For example, the number of comparative- comparative city agenda items is known. Okay, making informed decisions, cultivating trust relationships effective, or affecting compromise, and representing the public is what council work is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. A public comment will be four minutes. You need to get it off. Uh, the next one up is, uh, four oh two, seven one nine, nine 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 two. I don't, I get muted when he, she may not even hear me.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Robin White, Fremont, Nebraska. Thank you, Mr. Jensen, for admitting publicly that this was a backroom deal. Since this issue was discussed with the city's outside law firm back in November through now, how much money was spent on this? And my question then is, when did the city council as a body authorize this? First off, why waive the three-reading rule? Many people do not have computer or internet access. Some don't have telephone access and may not know what this, the issue is due to being home because of quarantine, because of the pandemic. The governor himself recommends that only the essential, time-sensitive matters may be heard during this pandemic. What is the emergency? It is important to note that, uh, chapters two and three were rewritten around the time that Mr. Newton became city administrator. He appears to want ultimate control. I also note that the clerk has not placed the time the meeting ended on the last few agendas. Was he instructed to do so? We elect city council members and the mayor to represent the citizens. There is no transparency. Personnel and department heads have been instructed not to speak with certain council members without prior permission. Council members formerly were authorized to call, stop by, and ask questions, and if city staff was busy, they were told a good time to call, visit, or email. We would then let the former city administrator and DU department heads know if there were any questions out of the ordinary or new issues so they could be aware. That was an extremely rare occasion. There were other city council members that were allowed to come in every day. Why are the rabble-rousers treated differently? Because they ask questions? Why is it not allowed for certain council members to make, or why is it allowed for certain city council members to make disgusting, disparaging remarks without anyone pointing that out publicly? But the goal is to silence the few that ask questions to educate the public. And finally, has anyone considered the constitutional rights of the citizens to have adequate representation? Has anyone even considered what this ordinance would do to future council members? Are we going to, uh, try to limit the mayor's comments as well? I disagree with this. Thank you very much for your time.
Uh, Gene Schultz?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, no one likes long meetings, I guess. But council members should have ample discussion time to ferret out the issues, pro and con. Uh, by my clock, uh, before this item even came up, we were into over three hours for a meeting tonight, which passes that fifty-minute, uh, guideline. Uh, so, there you go. Maybe one solution for agenda items carried over would be to ask if there was anyone present to specifically testify on a particular item. Then bring that item to the top of the list so it could be discussed. Maybe they've traveled a distance or hired an attorney to be present with them. Uh, or maybe they have a medical issue. And we could talk about that, uh, too, if you like, uh, where, uh, in one instance, uh, uh, developers' items were brought to the front, but somebody else that had a medical issue, uh, they were asked to bring, it was asked to bring that item up, but the council declined to bring that up. Uh, I don't know, was just the person making the request or what? Uh, seems like there might be a feud going on there. How about instead of council member making a motion to adjourn the meeting, how about that council member asked to be excused for the rest of the meeting? Then the meeting could go on if enough council members remain. Will muzzling the discussion of council members yield the best outcome for citizens on disputed agenda items? Will all the potential problems be aired? Uh, just like tonight on the, uh, COVID two-and-a-half-times pay issue, uh, items were brought up to be clarified. I think that was okay. I mean, uh, you say, how dare they ask questions, you know, like the, the Swedish girl about the climate deal? And then, uh, you want to attempt to steamroll the process by proposing to introduce, approve the ordinance, and then waive the first and second readings and move directly to the final reading of the ordinance? All tonight. Most ordinances require three readings over three meetings. So, limiting free speech is what tyrants do. And I would call limiting, uh, to two, five-minute, uh, sessions, uh, per council member, I'd call that limiting speech. Benjamin Franklin advised this freedom of speech is a principal pillar of a free government. When this support is taken away, the constitution of a free society is dissolved, and tyranny is erected on its ruins. I don't think Fremont needs this ordinance. It's a bad ordinance. It tackles the wrong problem. There are better solutions. I urge you to find them and then move- I urge you to find them and then move on. Either vote no on this ordinance, or withdraw it, or at least, at least put it on the three readings.
Yes, I'm against this ordinance. The meetings are long, but I think-
Please state your name and address.
Steve Ray, fourteen forty-five North Irving Street, Fremont. I'm against this ordinance. I do know the meetings are getting very long. Part of it is, they do have a long agenda, and then, when you carry things over, it makes the next meeting even longer. And some of the people set through those whole meetings expecting to be heard, and then you adjourn before they get there. I'm sure that doesn't help their- and there's other ways you could have this meeting go smoother. I've heard a lot of times, like, from the planning commission, council members don't receive very much information, maybe just the vote, not any particulars of what they were talking about, how they could move it forward, any pros or cons of something. I think they should get that kind of information so they wouldn't have to ask so many questions. And it appears to me that some of the council members come prepared and looked into the agendas and the items on it, and they've got questions, and to limit those members to just five minutes, they maybe have questions that they come up as they're talking, or as somebody else brings up an item. I think we could look into having, like they used to, more boards or commissions with a little more power, that everything didn't have to go through the council all the time. And do things in the right order, like, tonight, we've already had a plat, we approved the plat, but we didn't have it zoned. Why didn't we have the zoning first if it didn't get passed on zoning, and there was no reason to have that, uh, discussion on the plat of it? And I'd like to know also if this ordinance would take into account if somebody's talking for their five minutes, if that includes when they ask questions, how long it takes for the lawyer or staff member to answer their questions, if that's going to hold against their five minutes that they get to speak. I, I just don't think it's a good idea to limit the s- the council members that bring forth things and have really studied the issues, penalize them for asking questions, and I don't think any council member should feel like, well, the meeting's getting long, I hate to say anything because it's going to just make it that much longer. You're doing a real disservice to your residents or your constituents and your ward. Well, I'm not going to speak because the meeting's already too long. I don't think that's a very good, uh, situation to put yourself in. And it looks to me like the city's just moving more toward a city manager type, where the city manager has most of the say.
Uh, four oh two seven two oh nine seven eight five. State your name, and, and you have the floor. I thought she did, but I-
I already spoke.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Julie Hein, March twenty fifteen, Bramblewood, Fremont, Nebraska. I certainly affirm the desire to have the meeting shorter. I usually phase out between ten and eleven. But I am against this particular ordinance. I would rather see, like, three alternative ways to shorten the meeting. So there's more creativity used on the methods by which you could shorten the meeting, one being subcommittees that would facilitate greater interaction with staff, and may even have agenda items prepared more fully, more in advance than what they are now. I believe that this particular, um, way of shortening the meeting is unfair to council members who do their homework. It's unfair to council who need to represent their constituents' viewpoints, for those constituents that don't want to voice their opinions. This is not the time with COVID-nineteen where there needs to be much more discussion on testings, the sensitivity, specificity of tests, the antibody tests. How do we stop the spread of the virus so that we don't need to go into this red zone of, of emergency four? You know, these are the things that the council needs to be speaking, and this needs time. So I hope you will not rush this to a third meeting, but will look at alternative ways to shorten the meetings and still protect the health and safety of the citizens of this city.
Any other public comment? I guess I'll, I'll start. Um, I just want to say, you know, one, couple things, clarification, uh, and put some history into things. Uh, we used to have, uh, separate groups. Uh, half the council was development and improvement, the other half was resources. Uh, development and improvements took care of infrastructure and roads, uh, fences, gates. Resources took care of the finances. Uh, those were approved, uh, and brought forward, uh, similar to what a consent agenda item was. But the challenge came, and, and the reason it, that they went away, and council made the choice to, uh, to move them away was, we had, as Fremont began to grow and things began to change, we had groups that would come, and they'd want to present to resources. And then they would want to, uh, after presenting to resources, and they kind of got some feedback from resources, they'd come to council, the full council, and give their presentation, and it was a totally different presentation. Or vice versa, they'd do the same thing, uh, on development and improvements. The, the challenge here was the fact that, uh, those meetings would, uh, take place, uh, and, and you'd probably spend an hour at each one of those meetings, and, uh, a council made the decision, uh, to, and this would have been before, uh, actually before, uh, city administrator Shakovsky, and actually before, um, uh, Brian Newton as city administrator was here. All that changed. Back in twenty-ten or twenty-twelve, um, i- it wasn't, uh, city admin- administration or staff that changed, uh, the, the makeup of, of city government. It was, it was myself, a recommendation of myself and this council, not this council, but council members. So staff had nothing to do with that makeup. Um, and, and I, I keep hearing that staff did it so they could have more power. Well, uh, staff didn't do it. Uh, we did it because we were one of the last communities that had a utility, uh, in the state that hadn't combined. And at the same time, we were doing it, Hastings, uh, was doing it at the same time, uh, and I'm not real sure how they ended up. They've got a hybrid of this, of this version, uh, but Grand Island's done it, um, you know, but it, it really is, uh, i- it's made, uh, Fremont more efficient, and it was never more apparent, uh, and has been never more apparent, i- when we have a disaster, and, and that disaster was the flood in, in, uh, March of twenty-nineteen. Uh, I've never seen a team of, of city and utility staff, uh, come together and work together, and, uh, prior to that, that, I don't believe that would have ever happened. Uh, just would have never happened. As we move forward, uh, a number of items that are on the agenda, uh, I will tell you that, as, as Fremont, the staff is, is their job and their task is to take the items that come before them in a course of business and put them on the agenda for council to approve. Those items, um, have averaged somewhere between twenty-six and thirty items, uh, which tonight were thirty-two, twenty-six and thirty items, uh, for years, um, uh, prior to twenty-sixteen, prior to twenty-fourteen. Uh, I, I, I think we can, we have that documentation where we could probably determine, uh, and provide those numbers. So, um, you know, the, the agendas are, are long. I will tell you that when we got away from those, uh, those separate subgroups, then we had, uh, meetings on the off weeks. So, we would have our city council meeting on the second, then the third, we'd have a meeting. And then the fourth would be our city council meeting, and then we'd start right over with another meeting, and, and we, right, wrong, or indifferent, uh, you, you probably were spending all the time in all these meetings. I mean, truly, the time is the time. I, I get it, and, and it, it's extremely difficult to get through, uh, and make good, clean decisions, uh, as the evening goes on. Uh, and I think that, um, you know, I think as people, um, stress levels rise, um, decisions or decisions get made, and I, I, I think that's, uh, that's one of the reasons why folks want to have the, the meetings in, in shorter order. So, uh, a- again, just for clarification, uh, we, we used to have those boards. Council decided not to go to those boards. Maybe when the new mayor comes on, uh, down the road, that'll be something that, uh, he feels for the structure of, of city government, it, we should maybe go back to that. But it, it will take, you know, if there's four councilmen on resources, and they approve all the bills, and they bring that, then, at the end of the day, it should be over, and that approval should move on, and, and shouldn't be a lot of discussion in the council meetings. So, that's what's got to happen if we can do that, and, and it did happen back then. I don't know if it could happen now. So those are just items of, of past and, and, and really how we got here, but it, it's certain, certainly wasn't, uh, staff, uh, putting together their own, uh, power structure. So, any other items from council? Councilmember Jacobus.
I think most of us have been contacted at, um, great lengths by many people in the public. I had twice as many that were against us as before, and was more detailed, and what I kept getting back was, people expect us to be their voice. I don't know how you put a gag order on the voice of the people. The eight of us are elected to speak up and for those that don't, or can't, or aren't able to do the homework, or aren't willing to step forth into this interesting format called a meeting and speak publicly. Because, one, oftentimes, not all the time, they're ridiculed, or, um, comments are made backhandedly towards those people speaking up. So, we've had a lot of public that have contacted several of us, regardless of whether we're a ward representative or not. There was a lot of discussion on this, and I guess if this has done nothing else, um, some of us were already paying attention and understanding our meetings got longer, but there's several things that have played into this. We don't have the study sessions that were there in two thousand seventeen and sixteen. We don't have all the meetings that, um, Mr. Getchman, Mayor Getchman, excuse me, um, that our mayor was alluding to, because they did exist years ago. We don't do that now. We don't have those committee reports. Those of us that attend park board meetings, cemetery board meetings, library board meetings, whatever, we don't make reports in front of each other on a monthly basis, or after we've attended it. And regardless of the committee or group that we're on, we don't get those reports back. So we don't get that information. We don't get the information from all city personnel either. There is a level of distress between administration and several of council members. It needs to get worked on. It's a two-way street. And if this has done nothing else, it's brought to the attention, there's issues amongst council members, amongst council and administration. This is not the answer. This is a gag order. This is a compromise of freedom of speech by far. I know personally, I have been gone after with threatening letters, threatening phone calls, threatening comments when I voted against things like Sunrise, or I made any commentary in regards to a street that I didn't think should have been paid for. I don't know how many others have received threatening letters and comments and inferences. I've been called a liar by my own councilpeople. I've been denigrated. I've been literally accused of fraudulently creating documents which weren't true. That's disrespectful, and simply not true. But it was tolerated, wasn't it? So when somebody asked for the meetings to be moved up so that they could be heard, it was refused. We had a person who asked us, because of medical reasons, not once but twice to have something moved up on the agenda, in consideration that person was made fun of by a council member, and in the next meeting it was refused. At the same time, somebody, because they had a CEO position with a very respectable company in town, was moved up. They're no different than anybody else that votes for us, yes or no? The citizens of this community matter. They're all on the same page, regardless of the size of their bank account, or the company they own, or they don't own. We're all on the same level footing. They all deserve to have their voices heard. So at what point do you want that gag order put on? I could read, literally, every single one of these, and it would take me an hour to read the communications that I've gotten that are against this. But I won't take up your time, because I think all of you understand where this public is coming from, because it's going to keep mirroring the same thoughts that I'm expressing now. I got calls from people that worked for the utility departments in years past, in various aspects. I've gotten calls from people who actually were seated on the council in years gone by, both with, with Mr. Getchman as councilman and now as mayor. They're not for this. They wouldn't have wanted this on them. I think it's a very disrupt- disrespectful piece of legislation that's been put forth. And I resent that at times when some of us had wanted legal fees and the allowance to have legal overlook, something that we thought was important, we, meaning myself, and also Mr. Yurda, it was refused, and that was the end of that discussion. And I was told that we couldn't go forward, we couldn't expend legal time unless we had the full permission of all of the council. I'm sorry, that double-edged sword should swing both ways. Now we've expended over two thousand dollars looking into this and creating legislation. There was an issue, then speak up. We knew the meetings were getting long, and they're getting out of hand, but it wasn't just because someone decided to get too worried, or because they were trying to monopolize the meeting. There were issues at hand that had to be discussed. I think we need to do the right thing, and when we start getting ourselves into a contentious issue, if we're not going to end it in a fair amount of time, then we need to table it and continue it to the next meeting for discussion, or do the proper thing, the respectful thing, and continue to allow the time. Or consider having a study session. There are things that we should have study sessions, although we no longer do that. We don't want to take the time. I don't know. I'm willing to do it, and I don't know why we don't. In one year, two thousand sixteen, there was eleven study sessions. In a year prior, there were seventeen. How many have we had this year? Separate and apart from city council meetings? How many last year? Not very many. It would behoove us just to turn this thing down. This is something that we all have to work on, something we have to develop, some kind of a level of respect for the continuum of the council, but this is definitely not the answer. This is disrespectful, at the very least, and it's just literally an infringement, not only on the city council members, but also on the voting public who put us in the seat to be their voices.
Councilman Legban.
Yes, uh, mine is just the opposite. I've had twice as many people saying, we need to look at this, the meetings go on too long, not good decisions can be made at midnight or one, one-thirty like we've done in the past. A lot of these questions could have been handled by a few of these council members, maybe calling into the city staff- maybe calling into the city staff and asking them the questions. I know I called a city administrator numerous times to ask questions so I don't have to do it at the meeting. Maybe we could do a few more, a few more of us could do things like that. We're not trying to muzzle people. We're just trying to get things organized so we get things accomplished in a decent, timely manner.
Any other comments? Councilman Ellis.
I, since this just came out, I think I did not think it was a good idea at all.
You're muted, I believe.
Sorry about that. As soon as it showed up on the agenda item on Friday, or a week ago Friday, I did not think this was a good idea. Again, my main, my main way of dealing with some of this kind of stuff is to start researching and find out what are other cities doing. We're not reinventing the wheel here. And I really do believe there's other ideas, you know, there's been others proposed here tonight talking about different ways. I don't believe we need to be stifling any speech right now. This is, there's, there's, there's been an issue with the citizens not liking the government, the local government here, and I think this is just going to add fuel to the fire. There is one issue I want to ask our legal team that they fully believe that this is a legal action that can be taken by the, by the council. And I know that you guys have already spent money, but I would like to get that in writing from our legal counsel that they truly believe this is a legal right of the council to squelch the speech. Also, the mechanics of it, I just don't understand. We're going to add more features or more tasks to Tyler. You know, if somebody starts speaking and asks a question, you know, there's somebody sitting there with a stopwatch and then has to stop it when somebody else answers that question, it just becomes a logistic nightmare. I think it's a lot of overhead, and we're not, we're here to do the people's work. We're not here to make sure that everyone, I don't know, it's just not a good idea.
Councilmember. Go ahead, Travis.
We're just going to respond briefly. We are confident this is a valid time, place, and manner restriction on speech. Public bodies legislate how they handle their, their meetings all the way up to the US Congress, all the way down to cities all over the country. So, we're confident this would fly, but if the council needs further guidance on that, I'm willing to put that together.
Councilmember McLean.
I'll be, try to be brief. I feel like I should weigh in since I was part of this group. I had started to ask, I don't know when exactly, about possibly doing something to try to get these meetings more efficient. I will stand by the fact that I just think good government requires good meetings, and that means meetings that do not go late into the night. I don't think any good decisions are made when these meetings go. It has nothing to do with whether I want to spend four hours or six hours here. And I really, I received 30 comments. I have a paper. I wrote them all down. About half were positive, half were negative. The ones that were negative, there were, I responded pretty much to everyone except for about three or four that were so negative and just really downright vitriol that I really, I just, I couldn't mentally get myself wrapped around responding. But, you know, I had some good dialogue, I thought, with some people who actually had some good ideas. You know, we've got to figure out a way to make these meetings more efficient. And again, maybe, maybe this isn't the solution, but it has begun a dialogue that I think we need to continue. At the moment, I'm sitting here thinking, gosh, we've got to get through a consent agenda so that we've already put off a week because of technical problems. So, I'm, you know, I hate doing this, and I'll probably, you know, get lynched by Mr. Jensen, but I feel like we do need to maybe continue this so we can get a few of these critical consent agenda items handled this evening. But I spoke to Travis about, you know, is this a violation of freedom of speech? He's assured me it's not. I don't think anybody has that as an intention, but we do have a problem, I believe. I believe we're perceived as being somewhat dysfunctional at times. That's not something that I personally enjoy. And, you know, I do resent the fact that because I don't maybe ask as many questions or bring as big a stack of papers to a meeting, that I'm not as dedicated or I haven't studied the agenda as much as someone else. And, you know, I've also been, things have been said about me in a meeting that weren't true. So, we've all, you know, we can all bring up a lot of baggage, but we do need to move on, move forward together, be respectful of one another. That's something I've always tried to be and will continue to try to be as we move forward with this discussion, which I think we need to do.
Councilwoman Jensen.
I think the councilwoman is here ready to move forward on this. We have to say her a lot, let's say her a lot, get it done.
You're muted.
People have talked about, we will never get eight completely different peoples to get a consent of eight people. It's been talked that we should be having more conversations. The people who are against this have known that it's been there for two weeks, and my phone has been dead. So, if they think there should be more conversation, I guess it's as much on them as it is on me.
Councilman Yerger.
Well, I'll try to keep my comments short. I'm not in favor of this ordinance, obviously. I believe, you know, COVID-19 restrictions have limited public gatherings, and this is another one of those opportunities where we can either advance or retreat. I think, you know, we are duly elected to be part of a representative government. I think our constituents expect us to come to these meetings and ask questions on their behalf, as others have indicated tonight. And I think it's really important that we do the work of the people. That's why they put us here. And although the meetings are long, I'd be happy if they were shorter as well. But we have to be able to speak and dialogue for the people. And one of the things that this process, I think, does not affect very well is the interactive dialogue that you can have between council members or taking the ideas that come from the public or legal counsel. And if you only have one opportunity to speak and then you don't get to speak again, you don't have the opportunity to have that interactive dialogue with the rest of the council that's present or to react to what staff has had to say or what the public has had to say in following up to get to some clarity about how we should move on a specific item. And those are all part of the public debate that needs to be brought forth. And as a duly elected representative, I feel compelled to try to speak out as much as I can for the constituents that put me in office. And even at times, I've been asked to speak on behalf of those that are outside of my ward. And I am concerned that if you are placed in those positions as a council person, is that your five minutes of time to present their case, their argument, et cetera? And then are you not going to have an opportunity to actually have your opinion as a council member because you were the presenter? It's not clear to me how that works. I certainly think that there are alternatives to trying to shorten the meetings, but when we do have, you know, anywhere from 25 to as many as 40 items on the agenda, we can't possibly get through that many agenda items in 50 minutes. And I would challenge that we can't even get through that many in two hours. I firmly believe that other cities that we were compared to don't do that either because there was no information provided as to the type of issues that were on their agenda, how many issues were on their agenda. Are they in the same kind of growth that we're in in Fremont? We have a lot of agenda items because staff has a lot that they have to bring to our plate because builders, developers, businesses have a lot of things that we need to attend to. That's all part of doing business. I think that's what we signed up to do. If we can't handle it, then we need to figure out how to split it up and make it work better. I applaud the ideas for doing study sessions to break out some of these more difficult tasks so that we can actually tackle them outside of the main meeting and maybe be more focused, and that would be a great recommendation as well. But as presented, I can't see how this can be very workable for council members themselves and certainly not allow for effective representation of the electorate that put us here.
Councilmember Coons.
Yeah, I held off on this because I wanted to hear from all the other council members. Bottom line on this is we've got five council members here that feel like we're not getting adequate time to take care of our constituents, our concerns. We have three council members who feel that they're not getting adequate time, and I think we need to step back and look at what the truth is here in that. I take offense to some of the council members and some of the public accuse of some of us on this council as not doing their homework. And I think Councilwoman McLean spoke on that prior to that. Just because we don't bring a lot of paperwork and spend a lot of time talking doesn't mean we don't do our homework. I guess I look at homework from a different point of view. I don't like to talk about myself all that much, but I guess I'm going to have to. As far as being involved with this community, I think I've probably been involved with it the longest amount of time that all of us sitting in front here do. I have a lot of contacts. I do a lot of my homework via my telephone and via face-to-face contacts. I prefer the face-to-face contacts. When we speak of numbers of people that have called or sent emails, I hear 30, 40. Mine are in the hundreds. I get out there in the public every day. I'm with people. People feel like they can talk to me face-to-face. I think basically I'm pretty well-liked. That opens up a lot of avenues for me. I have a pretty good crosscut of all members of this community, regardless of their income, regardless of their position. And I think by doing our homework and contacting city staff, contacting the players in the, in the field, that we can, we can still represent our constituents on equal time with all council members. And that, that can be challenging, yes, but I think it can be done, and I think it needs to be done. Like I said, I haven't, I'm hearing from people in the hundreds that, that I don't come to council meetings anymore because they last four or five hours, you know? There are still those of us who have jobs and we're out working during the day. I myself, I'm even a volunteer fireman. I work a full-time job, you know? So, I'm not going to have time to write all my contacts down on paper and put them in a three-ring binder, you know? But those face-to-face conversations that I have are more valuable to me than that. And I like to take care of those issues before the meeting so I could just talk in a condensed form. So, and as far as this being an attempt for freedom of speech, well, we can all say that. We've got five council members here who feel like we're not getting adequate time, and we would like something done about that. We're not getting respect from the council members who do take all the time on the council. And so, we feel like we're the ones that are being muzzled. My constituents are being muzzled that called me. So, you can look at it any way you want to, but so far, we have five council members in my mind that want to see everything on an equal scale. Each council member has the opportunity to be heard equally before we move on to deeper discussion. And that's all we're asking is for our equal time and our equal respect to be representing our constituents that call us and contact us. Pretty simple. Five people on the council feel like we're not getting adequate time. Three people on the council feel like they're not getting adequate time. So, there you go.
Councilman Jensen. You're still muted. There you go.
I just, a lot of this has been brought up to where they're acting like this is the only opportunity they have to talk, and that just simply isn't true. I guess maybe we have some fundamental differences in what we think should be happening in this meeting. In my mind, this is a meeting for getting the business done, getting the business done. As far as the talking in the back-and-forth negotiations, questions between staff, questions between council members, where everybody stands, that's a lot of stuff that can go on in places other than the council meeting. The council meeting, they should be more concise, and we should be here to get, to get the work done. That's my last speak on this. I'm finished.
Any other comments from council? Councilmember Jacobus.
It is now past 11 o'clock. We're still not going to get through it. So, unless we can continue this to another date for further discussion, I'd like to have that motion made to continue this until after COVID-19 is dealt with and done with and we open up for full business. Because this is not the format that we should be doing this in. So, I would make the motion to continue this till after we are open for full business within the city of Fremont, and we have our normal meetings back at hand.
Councilmember Yerger.
I will second her motion to continue.
Cast your votes. Leggman.
No.
Jacobus.
Yes.
Jensen.
No.
Yerger.
Yes.
Bechtel.
No.
Coons.
Oh, get it done.
Ellis.
Yes.
McLean.
No.
The motion fails five to three. Councilmember Jensen.
I will make the motion to approve resolution, our ordinance 5530.
First reading.
First reading.
Councilmember Jacobus.
We could still be in the discussion, no correct? We only have the one motion made.
Love you, mother.
Sorry?
He made his motion.
Is there any more discussion allowed?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
She's muted.
You were up second.
She's muted, we can't hear her.
Thank you, Councilman Coons. You had said that, a few of you had said that you weren't getting equal time. Part of it is speaking up. And I would have to agree, paper is non-negotiable of a person doing their homework. I'm a paper queen. I don't read much on computers as far as reading and reviewing. So I appreciate your comments made in those regards. One gentleman wrote that he thinks this is a threat to freedom of speech and would strongly urge others to speak up and ask more questions. We all have the same opportunity. I don't moderate the meetings. Our mayor does. He calls on us as we bring ourselves to his attention to speak up. Hands raised now, lights lit on the monitors to begin with. We are all elected to represent our wards. Michael, you may speak to hundreds of people during the first week or a month. A lot of us speak to that literally in the same court for a week or a month also. Both in person on the phone and even communicate through email. That said, I would say we're all on the same plane if we walk into this arena called the city council meeting. There's nothing wrong with healthy debate. We've integrated, we've done it to ourselves. It's helped us to be responsible and writing it back in and be respectful. Another comment appreciated there is those that made their opinion. They are absolutely abhorred by this. One gentleman over and Mr. Coons is one. Another lady had said that even though they're in self-quarantine, they're not comfortable chiming in on these meetings. They feel that this deserves more attention to it, more discussion, perhaps study session just on this matter itself. Which actually would have been great. Because what I'm hearing is we need to have more discussions and decisions made. And if I recall, listening to the radio station when Mr. Jensen was on, Ms. McLean, they had the votes going into that they were gonna have this as already a done deal and moving forward. This was a discussion that's illegal as well, but yet none of us were aware of this. I shouldn't say none of us. Majority of the city people were not aware of this, so this is thrown on the radio and already aired there and in the paper. I think that was poor form in itself. We don't make up our agendas. We can sure craft it. I think we did the right thing in the evening as far as we arrange in the agenda and trying to couple things that are of like topics to be moved together, that helps. That was denied in times past. I'm not really sure why, but because the person who asked for that wasn't part of the group of four or five who were willing to vote against anything and everything that that person brought up. I'm not sure if that had anything to do with it or not. The emails are riddled throughout and commentary of phone calls. And I'm not going to continue to take up valuable time since it is now eleven oh seven or three minutes. I could pull an early train, burn an alabaster. Common thread is this, we have been dysfunctional at the city council. It is all of us responsibilities to rein it in and bring it back and be respectful. And being respectful of time is one of them. But this is not the answer. This is a knee-jerk reaction to those of us that want to actually put a gag order on a few of the councilmen. This is disappointing at the very least, and it's also disrespectful. There's been other people that have spoken for it. They're still not willing to come through. And one of the comments was we have to listen more, discuss more and accept less, that it's okay. If you wanna speak up about something, then raise your hand on your monitor until this is over. Or get your button on in your light and don't accept a knee-jerk motion. Some of us have been cut off without any discretion on a topic simply because somebody made a knee-jerk reaction and wanted to make a motion and squash any discussion. And that is a right. I am opposed to this. I am very disappointed in the collective body as well.
Councilman Lake Band?
Yes, I thought there was a motion on the floor.
There is.
And I will second that.
This is a motion to second to introduce the ordinance fifty-five thirty to amend section two dash one oh eight. Cast your votes.
Lake Band?
Yes.
Jacobus?
No.
Jensen?
Yes.
Yerger?
No.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Ellis?
No.
McLean?
Yes.
Motion carries five-three, Mayor.
Now, what, first reading?
An ordinance of the city of Fremont, Nebraska repealing and placing chapter two, article one, section two dash one oh eight of the Fremont municipal code and all other ordinances or already part of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect on first reading.
Request to suspend and move to final reading. Councilman Coons?
Am I up?
You're up. Sorry.
Yeah, there was, there was talk of moving this to the final reading and voting on it tonight. Thank you, Councilwoman Jacobus. I think you just proved your point. So I would like to make the motion to waive the three readings and get this taken care of tonight.
Second. Councilman Lake Band?
I'll second that.
Motion to suspend and move to final reading. Cast your votes.
McLean?
I'm gonna say no, I'm gonna make, I just think we need to talk about it a little bit more.
Is that a no? Ellis?
No.
Coons?
Yes.
Ecto?
Yes.
Yerger?
No.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
No.
Lake Band?
Yes.
Motion fails four-four.
Yes.
The motion is five to four, but to suspend the rules requires six votes, so it fails.
Moving to the consent agenda. Items eight through twenty-two. Item fifteen has been requested to be removed. Actually, it's a mute point. Donor has come up with the money to pay for the lights and so it's really a done deal. And item eighteen has been requested to remove, will want to continue that. All items in the consent agenda are considered to be retained by the city council. Will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless council members or citizens so request. In which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda considered separately. Is there any other items to be removed from consent agenda at this time? Councilmember Yerger? I'd like some very brief discussion on item eleven. You're muted, sorry.
I'd like some brief discussion on item eleven and twenty-one.
Any other items? I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda items eight through ten, twelve through fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-two. Councilmember Jensen?
I will make the motion to approve the consent agenda items as read.
Councilmember Lake Band?
I will second that.
Cast your votes.
McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Yerger?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Lake Band?
Yes.
Motion carries eight-zero, Mayor.
Item eleven, motion to use John C Fremont Park on Thursdays in June twenty twenty from six-thirty PM through nine-thirty PM for concerts in the park. Staff report? She's coming.
Can you hear us, Kim? I think you're unmuted now.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Kim Kosky, Director of Parks and Recreation. You have before you the annual request for Main Street Fremont to request the use of John C Fremont Park on Thursdays in June from six-thirty to nine-thirty for concerts in the park. This went before the park board on Tuesday, April seventh, and it passed with a vote of four to zero. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Yerger? Councilmember Jensen, is your hand up?
I'm sorry, it's not supposed to be right.
Councilmember Yerger?
I just had one quick question with regards to the fact that with the COVID situation that we're currently in, our parks are closed. And I understand the need for us to make approvals for the concerts in the park. My concern was if the parks aren't open and we're granting approval, does this need to be conditioned on the fact that we have reopened the parks for COVID-19? Otherwise, we'd have to bring this back and rescind our approval anyway. So I was, you know, does this need to be a conditioned item is my only comment. Kim, I think you had a conversation with him, right? And said if city parks were closed, that they wouldn't be able to use them.
Yeah, it certainly depends on COVID-19 and what directed health measure we're under at the time. And they totally understand that.
They just need to get the entertainment booked though, right?
Right, yep. They're in the process of securing donors and sponsorship and getting bans in order. But they're all in the same boat as we are with the waiting game of hurry up and wait. But, you know, they need to have their ducks in a row in case this really, we get through this and this can happen in June.
Any other questions for Kim? Comments from the public? Four oh two, seven one nine, nine 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 two.
Hi, thank you very much. No, Mr. Yerger asked the question.
State your name and address, please.
Sorry, Robin White, Fremont, Nebraska. Mr. Yerger asked the question I was going to ask. So thank you very much and thank you, Ms. Kosky, for your answer.
No problem.
Any other comments? Gene Schultz?
Gene Schultz, twenty-three oh six, Gene Drive. I'd just like to comment that I think everybody looks forward to music in the park. And if we get over this COVID thing, people are gonna want someplace to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Comments from council? Councilman Yerger?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the use of John C Fremont Park for concerts in the park. I'm certainly in favor of that. I would prefer that we actually append that motion to allow to reflect as long as the parks are open based on COVID-19, just so that the city has some clarity with regards to the discussions that have been had. So that they know the council is in agreement. We have to relax COVID-19 first.
But I would make the motion to- Can you just make your motion to that effect?
I make a motion to amend to include the COVID-19 restriction release. And with that condition, I would ask for approval of this.
There a second? Councilman Coons?
I'll second that motion.
Cast your votes.
McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Ecto?
Yes.
Yerger?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Lake Band?
Yes.
Motion carries eight-zero, Mayor.
And now I would take a motion in regards to the amended motion in regards to concerts in the park. Councilmember Jacobus? Is there a second? Councilmember Yerger?
Yes, I would second the amended motion request.
Cast your votes.
Lake Band?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yeah.
Yerger?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Ecto?
Yes.
Motion carries eight-zero, Mayor.
Item eighteen would be a motion to re, to just continue to the, just wait for the right word to come out. Continue to the meeting, the next meeting and agenda. Councilmember Jacobus?
I'd make the motion to continue this item.
Councilmember Jensen?
I'll second that.
Cast your votes.
McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Yerger?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Lake Band?
Yes.
Motion carries eight-zero, Mayor.
Item twenty-one, consider the recommendation of the mayor to reappoint three members to terms on the planning commission ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Deb Sukram has served and is serving Steve Landholm. Basically finished up a term that was open and Jure or so's term is up for renewal. So all three are up for renewal. And those, I talked to all three of them and thanked them for their service and asked them if they would be willing to continue to serve. And those are my appointments. Councilmember Yerger?
I asked, excuse me, I asked to have this removed from consent agenda. My belief is that when we have appointments such as these, they should be voted on individually rather than as a package. And that was my reason for taking it off the agenda. I'd like to see us vote on them one at a time.
Councilmember Jacobus? I would move ahead to do so.
She was muted. She was muted.
I was just muted.
Oh, you were muted.
I'm sorry, what I was saying was I didn't know if we had to have a motion made in order to have them considered separately or not. So Mayor had responded that we could just go ahead and do so. So I asked that we do so. Thank you.
So I would take a motion to approve the recommendation of Deb Sukram to the planning commission, a three-year term. Councilmember Jensen?
I'll make the motion to approve Deb Sukram.
Councilmember Jacobus?
I'd like there be some light discussion on that part of the motion.
You're a skeleton. Okay, you're fine. So we have a motion. Go ahead.
The discussion is- The discussion is, Mr. Sukram specifically has been on there since two thousand nine, that's eleven years. And so what you're saying is that a person is continuing to be effective, so after they've served fourteen years in the same position. I think we have many other people that are available and more than willing to serve on city boards and committees. We used to have a long running list that Mr. Tyler Ficken had, and, and times not so long ago, we've had people that had expressed some interest in some of the positions. I'd like to see that opened up rather than reappointed somebody who's already served.
Any other comments? Councilmember Legban?
I just think it doesn't look very good that Ms. Jacobus is asking us not to elect Deb Sukram and both who are running against each other for city council spot. Doesn't look very good.
Any other comments from council? We have a motion on the floor in regards to we got people comments from the public? Four oh two, seven one nine, nine 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 two.
Thank you kindly. Robin White, Fremont, Nebraska. I would just like to say thank you to the Planning Commission members for your continued service. And then just a couple of questions. Why, and this is due to ignorance, why are you reappointing rather than the new mayor? I'm assuming because you're not running for mayor. Why would you appoint now? It's probably because their terms are expiring, and it's just due to my ignorance for that question. And then for the record, what happens to Mr. Sukram's position if he is elected as a city council member? And then lastly, the, the comment from Mr. Legban towards Mrs. Jacobus was just completely uncalled for. That doesn't need to happen publicly. Y'all need to come together. Thank you.
Steve Ray?
Steve Ray, fourteen forty-five North Irving. I think we have some other people out there that have asked to serve on these commissions and boards. I've talked to three or four of them I know are on the list, and they said they filled out the whole application. And one of them said they've contacted the mayor, and I realize it's his appointment. But especially in the case of Mr. Sukram, he is running for an office, and if he is elected, then his seat will be vacant again, and so you'll appoint somebody else. I think at this juncture, it would be more prudent to give someone else a chance, and especially in light that he could move on to the city council possibly, and his seat will become vacant again already. I think we have other talented people out there, and they're always saying we want people to get involved in stuff, and we have quite a few people I've looked over that have expressed a desire to serve and stuff, but we go back with the same old people all the time. And I think some of these other people, you say you want to encourage people to help in the city, but then you don't give the people a chance to do it that are willing to come forward. And I've seen that one of them, I said, I asked if they've ever been vetted or talked to about it, and they said, no. Mayor said it's my appointment, and that's it. I don't think that's the way to move forward and get things done there. Thank you.
Gene Schultz?
Gene Schultz, Fremont, Nebraska. I guess I just have to comment that to Mr. Legban. All I could say is that people who live in glass houses shouldn't throw stones. Thank you.
Any other comments? We had a motion in regards to Deb Sukram. Is there a second? Councilman Coons?
Yeah, I'd like to get back on track. I'll second that motion.
Cast your votes.
Legban?
Yes, first I'd like to say I'm sorry if that was inappropriate, but I guess when it gets late, you say some things you probably maybe shouldn't say. But yes.
Jacobus?
No.
Jensen?
Yes.
Yuriger?
No.
Bectle?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Motion carries six two.
The next candidate is Steve Landholm. Any comments? Gene Schultz? Seven one nine, nine 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 two.
Yes, thank you kindly. I would be supportive-
State your name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, so sorry. Robin White, Fremont, Nebraska. I would be supportive or in favor of Mr. Landholm being reappointed to the Planning Commission. I think he brings a lot to the table. He does research, asks questions, and I'm very thankful that he is allowed to go visit staff members at City Hall every every opportunity he gets, whether it's five days a week. He really does a good job, so I would support him. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Take a motion in regards to the appointment. Councilman Yuriger? Go ahead.
Just one brief comment in regards to Commissioner Landholm. I know that he's one of those that's over there that does ask questions, and I applaud him for trying to bring some transparency into that discussion as well. So I just wanted to give him a shout out.
Councilmember Jacobus? You're muted, Susan.
I'm supportive of Mr. Landholm as well. I believe he's only been on there not quite two years. He's served well on the council, and he has density to try to get some discussion going, even though they're still minimal there, but I would approve him. So you would ask for a motion, and I would make a motion to approve him.
Councilmember McLean?
I'll second that.
Why don't you make the motion?
I can make the motion to reappoint Steve Landholm to the-
I didn't hear you. Sorry. So you're a second. My fault. We have a motion to second. Cast your votes.
McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bectle?
Yes.
Yuriger?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Legban?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero mayor.
And lastly, Jared Borisso. I would take any comments. Four oh two, seven one nine, nine 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 two.
Thank you kindly. Robin White, Fremont, Nebraska. I am in favor of Mr. Borisaw being appointed. He is a very kind person, and he asks very good questions, whether it's during the meeting or prior to the meeting, so I would be in favor. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember McLean, your hands up?
I'm sorry, I think that's from the last one, but I'll go ahead and make a motion to reappoint Mr. Borisaw to the Planning Commission, if no one else has anything to say.
Councilmember Jacobus?
I'm gonna have just one thing. He just served less than three years, and I was supportive as well, so I would make the second. Oops, now that I was muted.
Yeah.
Borisaw served less than three years. He's done a good job. He continues to do so. I would second your motion, Ms. McLean.
Cast your votes.
Legban?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Yuriger?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bectle?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero mayor.
Item twenty-three. Ordinance fifty-five thirty-one for a text change to section eleven five oh two oh two, eleven five oh four oh two D, and eleven nine twenty C, terms of the U D C to define cemetery, permit it as a limited use in R S R A R and U R districts, and stipulate conditions under which it's allowed. This is for the second reading. We'll have staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council. Jennifer Dam, Planning Director. This is the second reading on the ordinance to allow cemeteries as a use in residential districts as well as the G C and S C districts, actually instead of a permitted use. Due to the discussion that we have had over the last meeting, it would be a conditional use in those districts. The information is stipulated out in front of you, and at this point, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the Planning Director? Councilman Yuriger?
No.
It does look like in our backup material, Jennifer, we changed the resolution to amend the whole section rather than just paragraph D, right?
So. Yes, yes, sir. Councilman Yuriger, I did include the entire sections. And, and thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate you pointing that out to me.
Um, I assume that's what we were looking at. Just wanted to be sure that the rest of the council was aware of that as well. Thanks.
Any comments? Any other questions for staff? Comments from the public? Four oh two, seven one nine, nine 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 two.
Robin White, Fremont, Nebraska. I would just like to know, why is this not being presented as each property requesting it as a conditional use permit before the Planning Commission and then the city council? Why change the U D C text versus just having it a conditional use per property? Thank you.
Any other comments in the public? Comments from council? Councilmember Yuriger? Councilmember McLean? Your hands up?
Sorry, I'm-
Okay. I would take a motion to hold second reading. Councilmember Yuriger?
I make a motion to hold second reading of ordinance fifty-five thirty-one.
Councilman Coons?
I'll second that motion.
Cast your votes.
Legban?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Yuriger?
Yes.
Bectle?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero mayor.
Now we have a second reading.
An ordinance of the city of Fremont, Nebraska, amending Exhibit B of Ordinance five four two seven, specifically portions of the U D C, Chapter eleven zoning subdivision and site development. Exhibit B, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for separability and providing an effective date on second reading.
Third and final reading will be at the next meeting. Item twenty-four, ordinance fifty-five eighteen, repealing and replacing Chapter three, Article seven, Section three dash seven oh one of the Fremont Municipal Code titled Municipal Library Operation and Funding. This would be for the final reading. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the ordinance proposed to eliminate the last sentence of Section one of Chapter three, Article seven, Section three dash seven oh one, to make it comply with the intent of the ordinance, and we've hammered this one pretty hard, so I'll leave it at that.
Questions for staff? Comments from the public? Four oh two, seven one nine, nine 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 two.
Thank you, Robin White, Fremont, Nebraska. Yes, it's been beat to death. My comments, I won't even repeat, because you've heard them all before. My question, or what have you, is that if other boards and commissions want changes, then they can come before the city council with their request, as this one did. The library should operate under the library board. Thank you kindly.
We have a phone. State your name.
My name, Michael. Hello?
Hello? Yeah. Any other comments in the public? Comments from council?
I have no further comment on this matter, but I would like to make a motion to table this item indefinitely.
Is there a second? Councilmember Jacobus?
I would second his motion.
Cast your votes.
McLean?
No.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons?
No.
Bectle?
No.
Yuriger?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Legban?
No.
Motion fails four four.
Now I would take a motion. Councilmember Jacobus? Councilmember McLean?
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance fifty-five eighteen, final reading.
There a second? Councilman Coons?
I'll second that motion.
Cast your votes.
Lake Band? Yes. Jacobus?
No.
Jensen?
No.
Yerger?
No.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Ellis?
No.
McLean?
Yes.
The vote is four four?
Yes.
Mayor makes the vote five four. Motion carries.
Item, uh, I will have final reading.
An ordinance of the city of Fremont, Nebraska, repealing and replacing chapter three, article seven, section three dash seven oh one of the Fremont Municipal Code, and all of their ordinances and parts ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, fighting when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect. On final, final reading.
Cast your votes.
McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
No.
Coons?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Yerger?
No.
Jensen?
No.
Jacobus?
No.
Lake Band?
Yes.
The motion is four four?
Yes.
Motion carries five four.
Item twenty-nine. Resolution twenty-two oh eighty-three regarding architectural contract for the design of the Joint Law Enforcement Center. This time we'll have staff report. Do you move him over? You're up.
Good evening, Council. Shane Weimer, Assistant City Administrator. Uh, this is a recommendation to approve the, um, the selection of a police facility. Correction, the selection of police facility design group as the architect for the Joint Law Enforcement Center and the mayor assigned the contract. Uh, some of the background that goes into this. In nineteen ninety-seven, the police department moved into a vacant building, a utilities building that was built in nineteen ninety-six, located at seven twenty-five North Park Avenue in Fremont, Nebraska. This has been the home of the Fremont Police Department since, uh, then for the past twenty-three years. In two thousand fourteen, the city of Fremont hired Prohaskin Associates to prepare a detailed needs assessment for remodel of the building. The report was, uh, completed and showed multiple deficiencies of the current building or structure. In March two thousand fifteen, Prohaskin Associates provided a preliminary document with a phase one renovation of the existing building or replacement with a new building. The rev- the renovation costs were estimated at five point one million. The New Green, with the New Green Site, uh, project was estimated at five point seven million. In May of two thousand seventeen, Prohaskin Associates provided a revised phase one renovation document in which the renovation current, uh, building was now upgraded to eight point three million. This did not consider any harboring or moving costs that would be incurred should the police need to move out of the existing building during the construction phase, which was estimated to be approximately eighteen months. In two thousand and seventeen, discussion between city officials and county officials began, uh, to consider a joint law enforcement center. Both entities agreed to build together on a city-owned green site approximately thirty-second and Yeager Road. An agreement was made between the city and county officials that Dodge County would purchase half of the twelve acres, making the counties partner with the city in the ownership of the land for the Joint Law Enforcement Center. In March two thousand eighteen, Prohaskin Associates provided an assessment for a new joint law enforcement center for the police department, sheriff's department, and communication center. The total cost for the project was a price of sixteen point six million. Approximately half of this project would, uh, be footed the bill by the sheriff's department. In March two thousand nineteen, Dodge County officials preliminary stated that they were not ready to build the sheriff's portion of the Joint Law, Law Enforcement Center until an undetermined later date, and funding was obtained. In twenty-two, in, uh, twenty twenty, in the twenty twenty budget, the city of Fremont budgeted one point one two million for architectural drawings for the Joint Law Enforcement Center. The city of Fremont and Dodge County have moved forward together in the selection process of an architect that would build the police department and communication center with the intent that Dodge County would build on a later date. The team of county and city officials selected the police facility design group to move forward with the project. Police Facility Design Group was the only architectural company that designed only law enforcement centers and came in at the lowest bid. As you can see, there are three bids. Police Facility Design Group, eight hundred seventeen thousand. Carlton West Provence was nine hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred. And Prohaskin Associates was just over a million or about a million two. The fiscal impact for this project to the city is approximately four hundred thirty-two thousand one hundred forty-six of the total eight hundred seventeen thousand two ninety-two. The, uh, city staff recommends that, uh, we select a police design facility group to be the architectural firm. There's some, uh, what, what I'd like to do, or in your, in your backup, you do have, um, some information as to how the costs are, are divvied up between the sheriff's department and the police department. Uh, by approving the four hundred and thirty-two thousand one forty-six, what you're doing is, is you're giving, uh, city staff the ability to hire, um, police facade, police facility design group for them to start the project and to start, uh, the schematic design to get us up to November. So you're, you would approve this number, but we wouldn't necessarily spend the four hundred thirty-two thousand one forty-six. You spend a portion of that, or approximately half of that, the city would, until we reach the November ballot. Once we reached it, once we put it on the November ballot, the, uh, public would then vote to this, to decide if we were going to, um, go forth with the Joint Law Enforcement Center or deny it. But, but you need something you put in front of the public to tell them what they are, are gonna be approving or purchasing. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Weimer? Uh, councilmember Jensen?
Shane, I'm Mark Jensen here. I, I won't argue the need for this, uh, joint law enforcement. We're, it's, uh, it's a project that important one that we need to get done. Uh, I think you might have already answered my question. I'm just going to ask. Uh, we had a front page article today saying we're going to have a shortfall of a million dollars.
Right.
As, is this maybe something we should look at being one of the things we table at this time?
I appreciate the question that the, um, city has already budgeted for the architectural firm. Uh, we budgeted one point one two million on this thing. We've been kicking the can down the road, uh, since, uh, two thousand and thirteen. And I'd just like to point out that, uh, in speaking to the architect, the longer you wait, you can add five percent every year, between three and five percent every year onto the project. This happened to the, uh, the Viadoc or the Overpass that was originally, uh, we were gonna put in. We waited so long that it got out of, uh, it, it got so expensive that we couldn't afford it. So every time we kick this thing down the road, we can add another five percent every year to the, to the, uh, building itself. This building is built in nineteen sixty-six. So if, if we plan on kicking it down the road a little farther, we're gonna end up spending a, a lot of money, uh, to keep the police department in that same building because it has to have a ton of upgrades just to keep us in there.
Councilmember Jacobus?
To somewhat mirror, um, what Mr., or Mr. Jensen was going, and there's quite a lengthy article in there. And it's a very real reality that we're gonna see a drastic decline in our keynote funds. It'll be forty receipts or gas tax, et cetera. And I understand that we had capital improvement projects that were budgeted for, but it doesn't mean we need to expend the budget. Um, I'm not opposed to the police station. I've been very upfront and I support it. But this is also something I have to go to vote to the people. Very weary of spending roughly half a million dollars to get that to the voters' table in November. If they don't pass it, then it's a moot point. We've just wasted roughly half a million dollars. I'm not sure why we would go forward with, um, grandiose, a full set of plans or full investment. I'm not aware that the county has decided to chip in their half at this time, or if you say it's only gonna be a fraction of that, say two hundred thousand. Does that mean the county's gonna pony up a hundred thousand and moving forward to get this to the November election? This is something that the voters have to decide for. I'm hopeful that in November, they will make the decision to support this moving forward. But I would hesitate allowing us to give the go-ahead to expand over four hundred thousand dollars to get to that point on a, much less any expense on the county.
I appreciate the comments. Um, tomorrow, the county will be voting, uh, on this. In fact, uh, the resolution that I've written, that you, if you approve this, um, tonight, it would be with the intent that the county approves theirs tomorrow. If they don't approve theirs tomorrow, your resolution is null and void, that ours wouldn't go forward. Um, as far as the four hundred thirty-six thousand, explaining it again that, um, we wouldn't expend all that money up to November. We'd only expend a portion of that to get a, a product in front of the public, approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less, probably closer to two twenty-five, to, uh, at least get something in front of the public, so they know what they're, that, what they're gonna be looking at. You can't expect the public to vote on a sixteen point six million dollar, um, building with the county and show them nothing. You, you have to show them something that they're, you just don't go out and buy a car without looking at it. And, and I think you have to show the public what you're asking them to, um, uh, vote on in November.
Really, the, uh, the two hundred and twenty thousand that it would take to get us to the, to the point where we have a product to put on the ballot, uh, with some preliminary numbers, is about what we spent to be prepared for the library expansion. So, uh, the engineering fees are fees that, that we all knew we had to do. They were, they're a budgeted number and, and actually, uh, are, are in the capital budget. And, and again, um, the two, yeah, the two hundred and twenty-five is the number that, uh, is probably about what you'll end up spending to, uh, to get this, uh, to get us to a point where we know what we're gonna have to spend in the future and, and we can get it on the agenda, uh, for the November ballot, so. Um, councilman Ellis? Yeah. He's, he's getting it.
Couple of questions. Um, I, I think in the past, maybe last year, this was actually told that this was gonna be on the May ballot. Why, uh, we've known about this issue for a long time. Why didn't we not, uh, get this on the May ballot, uh, instead of waiting until November?
Well, it takes time to, um, um, put out the RFP. There was a couple of glitches with the RFP that we had to change. And then, uh, the first time out, we, we didn't have enough people, um, that I felt comfortable with, um, apply, uh, to be our architects. Uh, the second time out, we, uh, applied or had the RFP go out. We had enough people that we wanted to start interviewing and whittling it down to, um, get a good, uh, architectural firm that could, could take care of, uh, of what we needed. So it takes time and, uh, we didn't, uh, I would love to have had it on the May ballot, but it's probably better to go on the November ballot anyway.
Um, the third issue, or the second issue is, um, again, I think you under, you understand. I do a lot of research, find out how other cities have done it. Columbus is finishing up, uh, a huge project over there, uh, building a brand-new police station, bring, building a blend, brand-new fire station, and renovating an old one, about sixteen million. Um, I, I've got their, their document right here in front of me. Um, they spent about sixty-eight million in pre-design cost and pre, um, uh, I can't remember what it stands for. But it was sixty-eight thousand, yeah, sixty-eight thousand, I'm sorry. Um, and they're using the same firm, the exact same firm. So this is back in twenty eighteen. Um, so it, it just seems like the two twenty-five is a little steep. Is the two twenty-five gonna be split and, and the county has to come up with their half as well, so that ours would only be about, about one twelve?
No, um, the, the two hundred and twenty thousand is our half. And what, uh, what you're asking is, is, there's, there's several phases in an architectural, uh, design. And the, the first is the schematic design, which you get basically a picture uh, that shows you what your architectural firm would be putting together, that you could put on the ballot. That would cost roughly eighty-eight thousand dollars, alright? The second design gets into a little more detail as to what actually the plans would be, what, what type of, uh, a yardage or what type, what type of size it would be and some of the, the, the structural or some of the items used. So that's where the two twenty comes from. If.
Is Dodge County gonna, uh, add anything? I mean, is Dodge County gonna put in half of the, the pre-design?
That's what they would be voting on tomorrow.
But you, but right, but right now, you said it was gonna cost two twenty-five to get our pre-design for November. Is Dodge County gonna be putting in anything towards that for November?
Yes. Yes, they put in, they, we put a little more than half in. They put a little less than half in. So the total will be roughly, if, if we go with the, uh, design development, uh, phase, they will put in the other half or a little less than half. Ours is a little more than half of the five hundred thousand or four hundred and forty thousand because we have a larger portion of the building than, than Dodge County. That, their square footage or their footprint isn't as big as ours.
So would there be a reason why to go? You said there was different stages. Why would we go to the next one? Could we just? I mean, I'm trying to, to compare apples and apples here, and I, I just see that Columbus spent about sixty-eight thousand to present two buildings, uh, to, to the voters.
I don't know if they, buildings, that might have been just the police department.
No, it, it actually says here, fire and police. So there's two, two separate columns. And it's, uh, it totals out to about sixty-eight thousand between the two buildings. And I'm just, you know, first, I, I guess I wanna back up and say that, that the article this morning was shocking. And then I think, um, we got, we have to, as, as civil servants here, have to make sure that we're spending our money wisely. Um, we don't know where the bottom is gonna be on this thing. Uh, and so, you know, the first estimates are, we're gonna, we're gonna be losing out on a million dollars. Um, we could get another estimate in another month, and it could be two to three million. So I'm, uh, I'm just real hesitant. Um, I, I really would have liked to have had this done in, in May or for the May, uh, for the May, uh, ballot um, and, and spent, you know, fifty thousand or whatever to come up with something, uh, to get it in front of it. Um, two fifty seems like a, a steep number right now for us to spend, so.
Well, if I may, um, you will be appro, you would be approving the four hundred thirty-two thousand. Again, that doesn't mean we're gonna spend all that. What we can do in our, in their contract is we can limit what they, uh, put forth in, in their documents as much as we need to, to be able to put work towards the public. It doesn't have to necessarily be even the two twenty. I would suggest it be the two twenty, but we'll certainly talk to the architects. And if, if the county puts in, if you approve this, then once we get our documents, whatever is, is left over, we would wait for until after the November ballot. I wouldn't suggest that we spend the, the full four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, um, before the November ballot. I wanna just have enough money in the coffers that you I want to just have enough money in the coffers that you approve that we would actually have a design that we could put forth towards the public so they can make an educated decision on what they're purchasing come November.
Councilman Coons?
You're muted, Mike.
Councilmember Jensen, are you, you're next up. Okay, councilmember Jacobus? You're muted too.
I am so sorry. I've done that a dozen times. My apologies to everybody. In light of this discussion and Mr. Wymer stating that we wouldn't be nearly expending that amount, I'd like to downplay this. Either that or continue this until the next meeting so that we have full consideration of what county board is going to do because their meeting is tomorrow morning. I believe that's what Mr. Wymer said. They meet tomorrow morning and I believe that starts at nine. So either we continue this to the following meeting because this is an earth shattering to do now or we amend this, downplay it so that we extend no more than a hundred thousand dollars towards architectural fees getting this to the voters' table for November.
If I may, Ms. Jacobus, one thing is I wrote the resolution that if they don't approve it tomorrow, you're, you spend nothing.
I understand that.
Okay.
And so I guess I'd rather do one, down it, down to a hundred and fifty max expended out of our monies to get it to the November ballot. Or continue this to see what the county is going to be considering to do and what they're willing to expend to get it to the November ballot and match it. So I, I'd like to do one or the other and I'd like to hear what the other council would like to do.
Councilman Coons?
I'm having, obviously, I'm having some technical difficulties here. Just went blank on me here for a moment. I just want to weigh in on this. I know this has to do, everything was public safety. And I've been in on this police station predicament from the beginning and I, I think this is something that we need to get moving on. I don't think that public safety should be number one on everybody's list. And when you look at what a lot of the other communities are doing, the reason they're going to a joint law enforcement center, some of them are even going to a joint law enforcement slash fire department centers is to save money, you know? And, and if we're going to have a downfall of a million dollars, I think getting input from the county is, is the way we need to go. That's going to depend on what, what they decide tomorrow. But I know I listened to the mayoral debate today and was impressed that the majority of the mayor candidates put public safety above everything else. And I think this here is, is, is a perfect instance of that. We need to get moving on this. And the sooner the better because we saw with the Vida, the more delays you have, the price is going to go up and, and we definitely do not have the extra money to pay for those delays.
Councilmember Yurger?
Well, I appreciate the comments that I've heard from council tonight, starting with councilmember Jensen, who raised some concern about spending funds now when we're short of funds and several others on council have echoed that. And that was one of my concerns here as well. If we're looking at a million dollar plus shortage, who knows, it might be even bigger than that. So my question to you would be, what's the timeline that's necessary for design work? We're ways away from November. I'm in the same camp as those, I think, that say, gee, I don't know if I want to spend a lot of money on design work when the public hasn't even had a full opportunity to hear whether or not they would engage in spending some sixteen million dollars for a joint law enforcement center. Once they understand the magnitude of the project, whether or not ultimately it's going to include a jail or just house law enforcement officers. And those kinds of things have not been made public. And I think it's been brought up here earlier that we originally were going to put this on the May ballot. That's what we were told when we were discussing budget. And I understand there may have been problems, as you indicate, getting the bids out and back and the like. But my question really then goes to, if we don't approve doing this immediately because we're in the COVID-19 crisis and we don't know what our funding levels are going to be and we're going to be looking for priority spend, how much time could we buy on the front end before they have to start? Before we would still have something that we could be discussing with the citizens of Fremont before November? My way of thinking is that shouldn't be sprung on the voters in the November ballot. That should come by the way of city meetings with regards to informing the city as to what's being contemplated. What would be anticipated in the design, whether it's just joint law enforcement between the two agencies and/or with a jail? And, and what those proposals are going to be because that's input that's, we need to put in the hands of the architect in the first place. And we haven't even elicited any public input through public meetings at this point. So how much time can we buy on the front end?
So good questions again. In looking over the proposal from Police Design One, they can have they designed the schematic design only. So there's, there's several phases here. There's schematic design, design development, then construction documents is where they really start doing a lot of heavy lifting. So if they design just a schematic design and the design development documents, which you need to put in front of the, the public, or you could just have the schematic design, just a picture. They indicate that if, if we sign the documents, the, the contract in mid-April to early May, that they could have those documents prepared by the middle of July. If you decide to wait, obviously, we're, we're going to have a couple of, of months that's going to take them to, to develop those, those documents. But I caution you that if we wait for those documents, the public isn't going to have any time to review those, really those documents. You got to get out there and you have to, you have to sell this to the public. They, they have to have some, some, something to look at and you have to explain to them why it's necessary that you'd have a, a joint law enforcement center or a police department. So the longer you wait for those documents, the people that need those documents to get out there to show them to the public, the public isn't going to have that ability to look at that. You're going to shorten your timeframe up to November for them to make a decision.
I understand, I understand we're in a time crunch. And we're largely dictated by COVID-19 restrictions that doesn't even allow us to gather the public together to have public meetings, to have this kind of dissemination. Quite honestly, I don't feel like this is one of those kind of projects that you put up on a Zoom presentation and expect the public to weigh in heavily with regards to getting educated before something that would go on the November ballot. This is much more akin to the kinds of discussions that may have been had about bringing Costco to Fremont, et cetera. This is a major expenditure, be major bonding probably for the city. Not that it's not a good project. Don't, don't get me wrong. I just looking at the timing of what we're trying to do, whether or not we should spend this money now, whether we could delay spending it somewhat until we get our arms around where the tax dollars are really going to be and what our finances look like and still make the deadlines that you're trying to espouse as getting this onto the ballot with an informed public. Just looking for a happy medium there and thinking that jumping on this immediately isn't something that we absolutely have to do. We, we appear to have a little bit of wiggle room in front. And, and, and maybe we'll manage our way out of COVID-19 and things can open up and we could have some public debate. I think that would be extremely helpful.
The one thing I would say, Mr. Yurger, is, is that remember we, we budgeted or the city budgeted one point one, two million and we're, we're, we have reduced that number already down to eighty-eight thousand or two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. There's, there's already a seven hundred thousand dollar savings by, by going this route. I, I think that you have to have something earlier than later and it's certainly up to the council to do that. But I would, I would, I would, I think that the sooner we get the documents, the sooner we can get those, those types of things out to the public so they can make an informed decision or, or give them a, a chance to start looking and asking questions.
Well, it would, it would seem to me that, that the information that councilmember Ellis shared with regards to what some of the others were doing relative to their joint fire and, and police ventures or, or others. If we were looking at smaller numbers like that, what you're suggesting might make sense. But if we're still at the quarter of a million dollar level or something that the city isn't necessarily even well informed and hasn't provided any inkling as to their support level at this point, I am concerned still about the spend based on our restricted funds right now. Thanks.
We also want to be cognate of the fact that there are timelines to get it in to Fred Nitty in regards to even getting it on the ballot. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that as well. We, we have time now, but we still got to get it drawn and get it out and get it sold and get it on the ballot if we're going to go down that path, so.
Mayor?
Councilmember, City Administrator Newton?
So Tyler, what is the deadline for the county? Brian Newton, City Administrator. Tyler, what is the deadline that Fred needs, you know?
Something that I can ask. I have not asked that yet, so I can ask that tomorrow.
Do you remember when the last time we put it on the library on there, what the deadline was?
I would hate to say off the top of my head.
Okay. So part of the reason we need to spend an adequate amount of money is, is you get what you pay for. So if you only design five percent, I think the percentage on a sixty million dollar project is, is you could be off considerably when you take the, the dollar amount to the voters. I mean, so you have to decide, are you taking sixteen million? Are you taking sixteen point five? Are you taking fifteen point five? Because if you only do five percent of the design, you can be off a considerable amount and suddenly you find yourself short at the end and, and the voters didn't approve enough. And guess what? To get what the building you want, we'll be back asking you to spend more money. And you can't go back to the voters again. So part of it is, is to feel comfortable with enough design that you're confident when you take that sixteen dollars, sixteen million to the voters, you get the building that you want.
Councilmember Jacobus?
And do you not believe it's going to take over three quarters of a million dollars to get us a set of workable drawing in order to get it victorious in front of the voters? That said, the county board of supervisors is meeting tomorrow morning. And it's going to be also dependent on what they're willing to expand and what we have to expand. So either let's bring our number down and cut it to less than half of what we're moving forward to get it to the voters. Because we don't have the funding. It was very clear in this article on what's been pushed ahead at per year words. The easiest way to make up for the loss of revenue would delay city projects. I understand that other projects might get done. To me, the location is a priority project, but it's still something that the voters have to decide. It will not take half a million dollars to get to the voter table. And it shouldn't take three quarters of a million dollars to get it to the voters' table either with the cumulative efforts of county and city.
Yeah, that's not what Shane's suggesting.
It says four hundred and thirty-seven thousand is what this, would be agreement if we have agreed to move forward. That's just our take. It has nothing to do with the county. So fair minimum amount, it shouldn't take more than two hundred thousand dollars cumulatively with the board approval tomorrow, which we haven't even heard yet. So I would make a motion to continue this to our very next meeting with full consideration of what those monies will be at that time. Because they will have met tomorrow and we have a meeting following immediately one week from today.
Councilmember Jensen?
I can't hear Councilwoman Jacobus very well. Did she make a motion to continue this for a week?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the COVID thing is what's really bothering a lot of people and a week might tell us a lot. I'll, I'll second that.
Cast your votes.
Like man?
Maybe it's because I'm running out of gas, but I'm going to vote yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Yurger?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Tyler, I don't want to interrupt you, but it seems councilmember Bechtel's on the attendees side, not the panelists side. I don't know if he got disconnected or what. His hand has been up for a little while too.
I will move him over. Thank you for showing me that.
Yep. Thank you. My computer restarted. I'll vote yes.
Okay. Coons?
Public safety, no.
Ellis?
Yes.
McLean?
I'm out of gas too, so yes.
Seven to one. Motion carries to continue. Item thirty, Resolution twenty twenty oh eighty to declare the city intent to reimburse expense from bond proceeds. A report from city, city staff. You're up.
Good morning, honorable mayor and, and members of city council. This is a, a simple resolution. We've done one of these before when we were doing the bond for the wastewater treatment plant and the OPBD transmission line where we are not obligating ourselves to, to issue bonds at this particular juncture. Although the, as my staff report says, the election has already been held for this and we know that we will have bonds not to exceed two million dollars. We just need to get this lined up now because due to the current market volatility, we're not sure when we're going to be able to issue these bonds and we need to have this resolution in place in order to reimburse ourselves if we need to expend reserve dollars now and then pay back when the bond market is a bit more favorable to issuing these bonds. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Comments from the public? Four oh two, seven one nine, nine 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 two.
Hi, thank you kindly. My comments were on the last item, so I'll yield thank you. Hi, thank you kindly. My comments were on the last item, so I'll yield thank you.
Okay. Any other comments in the public? Comments from council? I would take a motion in regards to this resolution. Councilman Jensen?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020 dash zero eight, zero eight zero.
Councilmember Jacobus?
I'll second the motion.
Cast your votes. McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Yerger?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yeah.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Lake Band?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to a turn, Mayor. Item thirty-one, Resolution 2020-081, accepting and awarding the bid to Young Construction, Inc. for the construction of Luther Road South project. This time, we'll have staff report.
Dave Godek, Director of Public Works, City Engineer. This resolution is to award the bid to Young Construction for the Luther Road South paving project. This will be a three-lane concrete road from Morningside Road South to Samuel Drive. It includes sidewalk on the west side of the street as well and storm sewer. The low bid price was three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Any questions for staff? Councilman Jensen? Councilman Coons?
Yeah, I have a question for Legal. And that question is, are we required to accept the lowest bid?
No.
Okay, with that being said, I have serious reservations about awarding this to Young Construction. I've brought up several times in the past, every project that they've done for us, we've run into problems. And I think City Administrator Brian Newton said it best just a couple minutes ago, you get what you pay for. I would feel more comfortable paying a little bit more money and getting a quality job for our money. The other two bidders on this have done considerable amount of work for Fremont in the past, and they're very easy to work with, they're very honest. Particularly, the second lowest bidder really went out of their way to help us all during the flooding problems that we've had. I think money spent here is money invested. I would rather not muddy up the waters of Young Construction to go in some of the ugly details of the past. So I will just leave it at that. Thank you.
Councilman Yerger?
Couple of issues for me on this item. One has to do with the fact that we're in this process, based on the articles that I read in the paper today, that we need to prioritize the items that are of emergency or, you know, can't wait kind of things. We need to be careful about how we spend our money until we find out exactly what kind of shortages we're facing. So with that million-dollar item that's jeopardy at this juncture, I don't see a particular urgency for this construction project yet. There is access to this development off of Morningside Road currently. This development is in its infancy at this juncture, it's barely started. And as long as they have access for that work, it would seem that that might be adequate for some time. The other issue that I have here is that at the time we were discussing this, this project was to be funded from LB840 funds. I assume that that still holds. And those are funds that are in some jeopardy at this juncture. So given both of those concerns, I would like for us to not award this at this time, but to hold this back as one of those items that we put in a priority list. And this one's not at the highest list for me.
Any other comments from council? Councilman Coons?
This is a construction project. It's obvious from things in the past, the longer we hold off on this, the harder it's going to be to get the work done, the price is going to go up. It's April now. You're not going to get a contractor to do these kinds of thing in July, August, September, because they're going to have their year already booked up. So I understand about the money, but I'm not in favor of pushing this down the road any further.
If I may, the issue right now is awarding it to a specific entity. I don't think we'd be able to award it to the other entities listed, even though they're laid out. I would refrain from awarding it to anyone. It's either permitting, awarding, or denying the contract to Young Construction.
Councilmember Jacobus?
I was going down the same path that Mr. Coons had gone, as far as where to award that based on the comment by Legal. I'd make a motion to deny this.
Your second? Councilman Jensen?
I will second that.
Cast your votes. McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Yerger?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Lake Band?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero, Mayor. I think, item thirty-three, I would take a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Jacobus?
So moved.
Councilmember Lake Band?
I'll second that.
Cast your votes. McLean?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bechtel?
Yes.
Yerger?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Jacobus?
Yes.
Lake Band?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero to a turn, Mayor. Thank you all. Have a good evening.